Welcome, everyone. At 6 o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I'm going to start by just making my usual announcement about if you're planning to speak on any item on or off the agenda. If you could please be sure and fill out a speaker card and hand it to our city clerk. That way, you also get into the record of having spoken. And also, if you would come and sit up in the front row when it is time for your item to speak. Okay? With that, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Barco.
Is joining the pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberatory and justice for all.
Okay, remain standing. We have, yes, we have Pastor Quirk giving you a location.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Let's open in prayer tonight. Well, Father, as we just recognized the anniversary of 9/11, we will never forget those who lost their lives that day. I pray for the families who still grieve their loss, and we are grateful for the courage and the commitments of all of our first responders. And also today, as we celebrate National Policewoman's Day, we're also grateful for all the women who put the badge on every day. Thank you for their contribution and commitment, for they share an equal role in making police work one of the most honorable of callings. Bless them and their families, and we pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. All right, everyone, please seated. Okay, item 1.3, City Clerk's Report on Posting the Agenda and Followed by Roll Call.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The agenda was posted on Thursday, September 9th at 10:30 a.m. Roll call, Councilmember Armandares.
Here.
Councilmember Barco.
Here.
Councilmember Lino Munoz.
Present.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Tovar.
Here.
And Mayor Blankley.
Here. Okay, before we move on, I'd like to wish our city administrator here a very happy birthday. It was last week, but it's half a century. It's kind of a good one. All right, orders of the day, we have none. Employee introductions, we have none. Ceremonial items. Alyssa Gil Ojeda, are you present? Okay, you want to meet me at the podium? Right, Alyssa's the Development and Communications Coordinator of Jacob's Heart, and she's going to accept this proclamation. Okay. Whereas the character of our community is revealed in how we treat our most vulnerable, and whereas cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease among children, more than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, congenital anomalies, and AIDS combined, and whereas during the ongoing COVID-19 crisis, nonprofit organizations serving South Santa Clara County such as Jacob's Heart have been keeping medically fragile children and families housed, fed, and emotionally supported, and whereas the oncology department at Lucille Packard Children's Hospital at Stanford recognizes Jacob's Heart as a trusted community partner in providing family-centered care that addresses the emotional, practical, and financial struggles of families of children with cancer in South Santa Clara County, and whereas it is important for all Gilroy city residents to recognize the impact of pediatric cancer on families within our community and honor the children in our community whose lives have been cut short by cancer. Now, therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, on this 12th day of September 2022, together with the city council, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Would you like to say anything? It's up to you. No? Okay, thank you for being here. Okay, item 3.1, this is the time for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Hopefully, all cards are turned in if there are people here wanting to speak on something that is not on the agenda. Tied, how many?
I have 10 speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay. What's the cutoff? I forgot.
10 is, from 10, 0, from 1 to 10 is for 3 minutes, and anything above that would be 2.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're going to give this a try. There are 10, I know, because I'm worried that you're going to get more cards. Yeah, you're right, at 10.
First speaker is John Zekanowski, followed by Ramundo Armanderes, followed by Hazel Quintero.
Okay, so we're going to start, we're going to do 3 minutes each. So if you could please come and sit up in the front row so we could make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak if your name was called. John, you're up.
I'm over there.
Yeah, you go there. And there should be a timer that's right in front of you.
I'll try and go as quick as I can. Hello, my name is John Zekanowski. I'm a member of SCAPA, which is the South County Airport Pilots Association, and CAL DART, D-A-R-T, which is Disaster Airlift Response Team. My purpose today is to alert the council to the fact that we're going to have an exercise at San Martin Airport on Saturday, the 24th, to demonstrate the ability of SCAPA and DART to respond to a disaster. CAL DART's mission is to organize California pilots and ground personnel, provide volunteer disaster and air transportation services to benefit communities experiencing major earthquake, flood, or other disasters, and South County Pilot's mission is to support CAL DART. As you know, after the earthquake in 89, Watsonville, San Francisco was cut off from surface transportation routes. However, the airspace system remained operational. In the days and weeks that followed, general aviation aircraft were able to transport approximately half a million pounds of food, emergency medical supplies, and personnel to the Watsonville Airport. In the aftermath, the unique utility and capability of general aviation to assist in disaster response was recognized. Hence, South County Pilots organized a Disaster Airlift Response Team at San Martin Airport. All of our members are volunteers. All transport services are donated free of charge. Throughout California, CAL DART is able to leverage 26,000 California airplanes, 54,000 California pilots, 254 California public use airports. General aviation aircraft are able to provide transportation of food, medical supplies, medical emergency personnel, transportation emergency equipment, evacuation of persons needing emergency medical care, form rapid inspection of damage to dams, roadways, buildings, electrical supplies, towers, et cetera. The use of general aviation assets greatly enhances the ability of local and regional communities to respond to the needs created by these disasters. So I'd like to invite the council to come and observe our exercise on the 24th, and if you're so inclined, we'll get you a ride in an airplane.
Okay.
If you do want to ride in an airplane, by the way, you've got to register. So I'm going to leave these cards with those gentlemen over there.
City Clerk.
And hopefully, you'll be able to come out to San Martin Airport on the 24th and see what we're up to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Ramundo Armanderes, followed by Hazel Quintero, followed by David C. Lopez.
Okay, so if your name was called, please be sure you're up in the front.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you all for letting us speak tonight. I wanted to share that I'm here tonight to speak on a project GADAS has, would like to support. GADAS has been on a campaign to have the city build a youth center in East Gilroy. We have researched some near available locations in East Gilroy, and we think that it's, the location is going to be key for it to reach the goals that we had for the youth center. So GADAS has also been connecting with local families and conducting surveys and petitions to see how people feel about the location in the Latino community as well as in the non-Latino community. So we have received overwhelming support for the youth center as well as the location for it being built in East Gilroy. I think a lot of families have expressed that location is key because they feel like there might be a higher risk if their children have to, you know, walk or, you know, to reach the youth center, that they would be kind of concerned about there being approached by, you know, either gang members or, you know, other folks, as well as being harassed on their way to the youth center or from the youth center. So they felt that safety was key. So I wanted to express that from our multiple petitions and survey, surveys that we conducted around six different sites in Gilroy, that's been the overall sentiment, is that they definitely support the youth center being built as well as the location of the youth center being built in East Gilroy. We know that there is recently been a couple of locations that have come up in East Gilroy to be available. One is at the old Garden Belly Foods warehouse and parking lot. The warehouse has been razed, so there's just an empty lot there now. So that was one location. I think it's owned by Southern Pacific Railroad. And the second location is over at the Bank of America that recently just closed down right on Monterey, and I want to say IOF, where those cross. So those are just a couple of locations that we were, we thought would be important to consider for the building of the youth center. We also wanted to acknowledge that we have heard a lot of support from the council and the mayor as well for this project. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hazel Quintero, followed by David C. Lopez, followed by Ron Kirkish.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members, and community. My name is Hazel, and I'm an intern at GADAS. I am only here to inform you all that GADAS have made great improvements within the last few months in gaining the community's support in building a youth center. We have, we have received approximately 300 petition signatures and around 150 surveys completed in both English and Spanish from only surveying at places like Walmart, Target, Safeway, and also at St. Mary's Church. We hope to be a part of the city council's agenda soon and to gain your support in establishing the youth center in East Gilroy, if not a place close to there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
David C. Lopez.
Good evening, city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm not sure if I'm the only one that's being affected by my circumstance, but I wanted to bring it up to the city leaders, just so they are aware of social issues that are going on in the city. I was assaulted in the city of Gilroy on May 30th, 2021 with a Corona bottle. I filed a police report on August in 2021. To this date, nothing has been done on this case, even though we have a suspect. I'm a retired police officer and worked under five different chiefs, so this, this situation wouldn't fly in my department, and I've been trying to meet with the chief for the last six months. I don't expect you to know anything about what statute of limitations means, but the DA in Santa Clara County is waiting for some follow-up work to be done on my case. I could easily do the work myself, but the DA said that it wouldn't be wise because it would be a conflict of interest. I dealt with half dozen supervisors trying to get the officer on the case to write the follow-up work, and the officer, during all this going on, he was promoted, which, which is, I'm astounded. He wrote a good report, but failed to do anything else. I reached out to a captain by the name of Juan Rocha. He started off in Watsonville PD where I worked, and then he came to Gilroy. I'm a recently retired, 37-year vet of the police department. I retired as a sergeant. This captain never called me back. What, what he told me after I filed a complaint, he said, "I talked to the officer to call you," and I said, "Well, you should have called me back." Then I tried to make an appointment with the chief, and the chief secretary for the last six months has been telling me that the chief is too busy, and I don't understand it. For the life of me, I'm confused. I don't know if it's something other than he's too busy. I then filed for a restraining order against a suspect, and it was granted an order. I then got help from the records clerk, who sent the report to the DA's office, was waiting for the case. The report sits in the DA's office, waiting for the work to be done. Then I found out a year after the case was filed that the suspect...
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. The timer is in front of you.
Okay, all right. Well, the suspect was never interviewed.
If you could just leave your contact information with the clerk, like you probably already have, then that's enough. Sorry, thank you. Next speaker.
Ron Kirkish, followed by Joan Lewis, followed by Jaclyn Castillo.
Good evening, Mayor, council administration, and community members. Once again, Councilmember Hilton wishes to insert the power and reach of our local government's tentacles into the privacy of our homes by insisting that gun owners must store their weapons in locked boxes. Gun owners who purchase their weapon to protect their own lives and the lives of their loved ones from harm, and weapons that are needed immediately, should such an unfortunate occasion arise, which we see is happening all too often today, meaning time is of the essence. To unlock a lockbox or whatever would take time away from being able to protect themselves. Frankly, like the social host ordinance that was completely ignored at the cost of four teens being shot and two who died at the Halloween party last year, so far, we have found that the ordinance was feckless. As an individual of influence in making logistical decisions to help hold the Halloween party continues to refuse to take responsibility for the carnage, rendering the ordinance worthless. And feckless is this ordinance, said Councilman Hilton wishes to impose on the citizens of Gilroy. I might add, it is unnecessary since the government of California and the federal government already have laws on the books that effectively deal with this issue and can take precedence over any ordinance that the city might consider. For these reasons, I respectfully request the mayor and the council to vote nay, should Councilman Hilton wish to once again bring this issue back up before the days. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ms. Joan Lewis, followed by Jaclyn Castillo, followed by Xavier Garcia.
Good evening. I came here tonight. I am a member of the California Farm Bureau Federation and Santa Clara County Farm Bureau, and I gave the clerk some newsletters for each one of you. I'd like you to take and read the president's message so that you can see the challenging times that agriculture in our community and the state of California are facing. So it's a five minutes, read it. There is other good articles in here, and I really encourage you to understand farming here in our county and how much longer we can withstand all the circumstances that we're under. Thanks.
Thank you, Joanie. All right, next speaker.
Jaclyn Castillo, followed by Xavier Garcia, followed by Eric Jacobson.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jaclyn Castillo, and I'm with GADAS. I've been a receptionist for about eight months now. So I want to mention to you guys how important it is for us to open up a youth center here in Gilroy. Not only do a lot of cities have youth centers, but Gilroy doesn't really have one where kids could come and do their homework, play activities. Not only have we been doing petitionings, but you know, anytime someone enters the office, it's mainly a youth, youth that comes hungry, a youth that comes needing help with homework, and we'd love to help them. I really hope that you guys would love to help us all because youth is the next generation of our, you know, city councils of, so we want to get as much as help and support from you guys, just like we do from the city and our community. We've been getting so much feedback. Our main feedback would be, where would this youth center be? And we are just thinking about where are all the high-risk kids, you know? Who is the ones that need it most? And we look at the east side, so we could really hope that you guys also take a look at that, the location. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Xavier Garcia, followed by Scott Solomonsen.
Hello, I'd also like to speak on the location of the youth center. Recently, I've been like passing out surveys with GADAS, and I've visited like six locations, like Ramundo said. And usually, when we pass out the petitions, we mention like where, where like the youth center, where we would like it to be built, and we say the east side because that's where a lot of the youth center, I mean, that's where a lot of the high-risk youth are. And usually, the people who are signing, usually like their faces light up. They're like, wow, that's like a good spot to put it. And it like makes sense too because it's like where it's most needed. And so I just like to like bring that up, and I'm sure Ramundo and Jackie brought up like a good point, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Eric Jacobson, followed by Valentina, I'm sorry, Runex? Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon. I want to discuss the homeless issue that we've been dealing with off of IOOF Avenue by Gilroy Prep School. My son just got into kindergarten there, and my wife walks him to school every day. On multiple occasions, she's been berated by the homeless that live under the bridge. I brought this up to the school district, and apparently, the bridge falls under your guys' jurisdiction. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping you guys can see the severity of this. Some of the issues going on are they're breaking into the school. There are holes in the fencing that the school always has to repair for the safety and security of our kids with everything going on. It seems like that would be an urgent issue. She gets berated. She's been verbally assaulted once, walking my son to school. It's, it's supposed to be a joyful event, you know, walking your son to kindergarten. You walk him up to the class and pass him off. You want to trust that he's safe during the day at school, and it blows my mind that there isn't some sort of ordinance to keep homeless camps so many yards from a school, you know, or even a public park for that matter. I think, I think just doing that, coming up with, you know, 100 yards or some sort of distance where you can move them away, their services can still be brought to them at that location would make a big difference. And they wouldn't be right outside the elementary school and then all night long snipping through the chain link fence, you know, along with the fires that they do down there and the drug deals I've witnessed firsthand. It's, it's nothing you want your elementary kids to witness. So I'd appreciate your thought on that, and hopefully, something can change.
Thank you. Hopefully, you stick around because item 10.1 is addressing that tonight. Okay?
Valentina Rinalles.
Good evening. My name is Valentina Rinalles. Couple things I wanted to hit on. Thank you, Rebecca, Dionne, and Carol, and the rest of you guys, Mary, sorry, Ms. Blankley. I have been also advocating for the homeless encampment behind Navigator to get cleaned out. I'm also a proponent to make sure that homeless people get the services they need. I do believe whether they're drug addicts or have mental health issues, their lives matter. I, I too, and I'm looking forward to seeing if we can propose an ordinance to have 500 feet within a school that there's no encampments. I also, I'm glad I came today because I absolutely advocate for the east side to get a youth center on the east side. I had privy of hearing some people's comments about, just in particular, like the lowrider community here in Gilroy that's full of drug addicts and gang bangers, and I sat on it for a month because it bothers me. I'm excited that San Jose has finally removed their no cruising ban in 50 years. San Diego embraces the Bombs Car Club in San Diego, and I would like to propose, here in Gilroy, what can we do to actually embrace the community that we have here, like our fellow sister cities? And, and we want to talk about at-risk, yes, at-risk, those kids that are at risk, if they knew that this city actually embraced them and didn't consider them drug addicts and gang bangers, build the gap. I, I, I see what we go back and forth with, and I'm really concerned if some of our council members have this mentality about that community, which fails to realize that it's cultural. It's not just a nitty-witty, it's cultural. And I can say all white people want genetics and want to have purebred and blue eyes and blonde hair, but you can't hold on to those stereotypes. I can say black people like chicken and watermelon, but you're not supposed to hold on to those stereotypes. And a person in power, no wonder, at the Christmas parade, nobody cheered for the car club that was there. Kids that had their bikes in the parade, crickets. And now I understand, when we are spewing this hate to our constituents, they're going to trust you, and they're going to trust what you say. And when you say a whole community is gang bangers and drug addicts, they're going to close their shades, and they're not going to even want to address this. It was a prime opportunity when the Impalas had their car club to get out there and mingle with that community to show that there is true bipartisism in the city of Gilroy, but it was neglected. Not only it was neglected, a room for constituents was told, it's not family-friendly, it's full of drug addicts and is full of gang bangers. And I am shocked and appalled that there's people on our city council that reiterate that garbage. Thank you.
Thank you. Any...
No more speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, that was 10. All right, so closing public comment and moving on to reports of council members. Councilmember Barco.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Armanderes.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to recognize that September 15th through October 16th will be Hispanic Heritage Month, which is an opportunity for us to recognize the history and continued contributions and sacrifices of Hispanic Americans and what they've had on our country. From farm workers to veterans, to scientists and teachers, and a Supreme Court Justice, their contributions are impacting our daily lives, our history, and what we've built our country on. And so I just want to recognize that in our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Marks.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Just want to let the public know there are two events coming up. On October 8th, there's going to be a chalk festival held downtown, and also on October 15th, there is going to be a beer crawl, and Gilroy Gardens is still doing their Explorer Nights on Friday nights until the end of September, and then their Halloween Nights will start in October. Thank you.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor. From the South County United for Health, Gilroy Active Transportation Community Survey is happening right now. The Santa Clara County Public Health Department received an action transportation grant focusing Gilroy on promoting safe walking and biking routes to community hubs such as parks, libraries, clinics, businesses, through education and encouragement activities. They are currently in the process of promoting our community survey that, that will help guide our stakeholder discussions on barriers to walking and bicycling, as well as, as well as what types of education and encouragement programs we can implement based on the community needs. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just on that, Councilmember Hilton, I tried to take that survey, and it said you had to live on the east side, so it was only for some members of the community? Is that correct?
I haven't heard that.
Yeah, I tried to take it, you'll see. When it asks you, it's just looking on if you live east of Monterey. Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing to report. Mayor Blankley and I were able to attend the National League of Cities Conference that consists of mayors, council members, and city administrators, and city staff from throughout California, and was lucky enough to meet probably about 100-plus people there. And in addition to that, different companies that are working on some of the issues that we're trying to tackle, some of the workshops I was able to attend, I know the mayor and I attended a few together, but some of the workshops that I found very valuable were homeless issues, obviously talking about what other cities are doing. Berkeley is doing really good stuff, believe it or not. I mean, they're doing some really good stuff out there, and they created an app that I'm hoping that we might be able to look into. Other workshops, Economic Development for Local Cities Within California, really focusing on what we can do for cities within California, especially here in Gilroy. I also attended Supporting Local Businesses and Helping to Raise Community. Capital is a really good one, talked a lot about what we can do as a city, which I would share with city staff. And then the last one I was able to attend was Advancing Empowerment in Disadvantaged Communities Within Your City. So really working with other cities and working with them and seeing what they're doing, finding best practices that we could use here in Gilroy. So I plan on sharing that with, with city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember LaRumenios.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No updates, but just a couple of quick previews. The Mobility Partnership Meeting that both the mayor and I are a part of, which again brings together leaders from Santa Clara County and San Benito County, will be meeting this Wednesday to discuss the 10125 interchange as well as Highway 156. Additionally, the City Association Meeting for Santa Clara County, I represent our city on that, and that will be happening at the, towards the end of the month. And then since we're looking out a little bit towards the beginning of October already, it's kind of scary, it's less than a month away, but that is when Gilroy celebrates its National Night Out. So that'll be the first Tuesday on October 4th. So more to come at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Okay, and in my report, Gilroy Economic Development Partnership, we met this month and discussed... and discussed support for the city to enter into the exclusive negotiating agreement that is coming up on our agenda here tonight. That letter is also part of the packet for anyone who wants to see it. They're suggesting renaming this whole topic the Recreation Gateway Area and not calling it Gilroy Gardens anymore. And then there was discussion, not, nothing to be, nothing determined yet, but discussion on what the next three initiatives will be for the organization. And it's looking like things having to do with trades, training and attracting jobs. But that has not been determined yet. And then lastly, yes, I too attended the League of California Cities Conference with Councilmember Tovar. Thought it was very, very, very insightful. And so the one thing I'll add, since Councilmember Tovar listed some of these things that I too attended with him, is that we were reminded that at the head of our organizational flow chart are the residents of Gilroy. Then comes city council, then comes our city administrator. So the residents are the people who put us in these seats, right? Not those who are from out of town and not organized groups going city to city, championing regional, statewide or national causes. Our obligation and our allegiance as elective local government is to our residents and our residents alone. Okay? Under council correspondence, the only item is the updated council member attendance. That's in the packet for everyone to see that cumulative total. Okay, and then we have, under item six, we have a request by Councilmember Hilton to consider again the same request he made to this council last year on March 21st and to which we all spoke regarding the consideration to adopt a city ordinance for gun storage in addition to the California state regulations. If you now wish to see this as a future agenda item, please indicate so with a thumbs up.
Something I want to say.
We've all said already, it's the same thing.
No. You don't get to say what my future council initiated agenda item is.
Then all you can say is what's different. You've already brought this same issue up. So if something's different, you can say that.
That's completely out of order.
We're, last time we were criticized by a council member for all of us speaking too much. We've all spoken. If one person speaks, then everybody's going to speak. I'm trying to avoid that and I don't have to do it for the same issue to the same council.
No, if something makes you feel uncomfortable, then it makes you feel uncomfortable.
It doesn't make me feel uncomfortable.
We're the Brown Act Mayor, we get to discuss these things, we have to discuss these things in front of the public.
We're not discussing it.
And so I think it's appropriate that he allowed to state his own agenda item.
This is my future agenda item.
It's the same, I'm not editorializing. It's the same item that he, because it's.
By definition, you just editorialize his proposal.
I am asking this, thank you, I hear you, I hear you both. Okay? But I am asking this council if they would like to consider this item as a future agenda item. It is the same item you brought before. That is why I am taking this position. You did it with the education thing as well. You're circling through, you've already raised it. So we don't need to hear again what's already been raised.
So I get to do this too for everybody else that wants to bring up something again?
Yes, if somebody wants to bring the same thing up again.
I can stop, I can stop them ahead of time.
How do the members of the public today, the members of our audience, do they have to look up?
We're not discussing anything, Councilmember.
Do they have to look up the council meeting from March of last year?
Yes.
To understand what he's proposing?
Yes.
Instead of allowing him his due right to propose something.
Councilmember, I am running the meeting. You're the one who asked us not to discuss.
It's way out of order.
We don't get to discuss the merits, we don't discuss the merits of it. That's already been established. The council has already told us that. But he does get to, why wouldn't he get to?
No, because it's reading the same statement.
If I, if I may, we've had statements about being out of order or not. The attorney, if you could jump in and let us know what the procedure is.
I, I think the appropriate procedure in this context is for Councilmember Hilton to state what the item is. Not, not, obviously his council knows not supposed to discuss it, we can't really do that. But he can, I believe Councilmember Hilton should be allowed to state what the item is he's proposing, if he is proposing.
Even though it's exactly, well, it's in our, it's in our minutes. It was in our minutes that we, that we're going to be briefing.
Is it in our agenda packet?
Councilmember, can you please stop interrupting?
Well, I'm not going to sit by while a round act is being, you know, is being violated.
While I run the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, the mayor, the mayor may run the meeting, but Councilmember Hilton has not formally proposed anything yet. So I think he has the opportunity to make a brief proposal of what the item is.
Okay, Councilmember, read your statement.
Here's my future agenda item. We've heard once again from the Santa Clara County Public Health Department, Silicon Valley Alliance for Gun Safety, community-based organizations and the public asking for us to consider some common sense gun safety reform. I'm requesting to place the City Code Chapter 16 offenses miscellaneous amendment to add safe storage of firearms with a goal of reducing gun violence and improving gun safety for everyone on a future agenda. I am not looking for a discussion on the merits of my request, but simply following the procedures to request future agenda items per our norms. We can have that discussion if this item makes it on a future agenda. And with that, I am happy to answer any clarifying questions.
Thank you. It is the same item from March. So may I see a thumbs up?
It's our right to do the same item every single meeting. This is the public's meeting, not yours.
Now, this is future agenda items.
Yeah.
May I see a thumbs up for those who would, thumbs up for those who want to see this on a future agenda? Okay. It fails again. Thank you. Are there any other future agenda items?
I'd like to propose one.
Okay.
If it's not on your agenda for next meeting, Mayor, I'd like to ask for a resolution recognizing September 15th through October 16th as Hispanic Heritage Month.
All right, thank you. Ty, can you please record? Record, she's, yes. Thank you. Asking for historic.
Madam Mayor, can I see the thumbs up again?
That's a, I'm sorry.
Summarize the thumbs up, thumbs down?
Just a second. You asked for a resolution, not a proclamation, right?
Correct.
What did you ask for? That should be a thumbs up or thumbs down? Yes, I was thinking proclamation, my apologies.
Thank you.
Okay? That passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. Is there anything on the consent calendar that a council member wishes to pull? Okay, then let's go to public comment. I'd like to open public comment.
No public comment, Madam Mayor.
All right, closing public comment. Okay, so there's a motion to approve and a second, motion to approve by Councilmember Barco, seconded by Councilmember Tovar. I just want to point out one correction that needs to be made on the minutes of August 29th regarding attendance. If I could find it. That I already told the city clerk about, but in our, in the minutes in our packet, on the August 29th study session, it had Councilmember Barco as absent and Councilmember Hilton as present, when instead it was Councilmember Hilton that was absent and Councilmember Barco who was present.
Correct, Madam Mayor, and I provided the copies of the amended draft for you to review.
Okay, so as long as that's acceptable to the motion maker and the second to make that correction, okay. We can vote.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRumenios?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blenckley.
Yes. All right, that passed unanimously. Bits of proposals, we have none, public hearings, we have none. So that brings us to 10.1, which is consideration of expanded restrictions on camping on public property. And Bryce, you're going to give us this staff report, right?
Excuse me, Mayor and Council. Sorry, looks like it shut down one second. There we go. Yes, Mayor and Council, so this is a follow-up item, continuing discussion on asking council for consideration of exempt, sorry, expanding camping restrictions on public property. So the question that's before council is should the city modify its current ordinance for enforcement of no camping restrictions in the city? On July 5th, discussion regarding Boise was presented to council. The key takeaway was that the Boise decision essentially established that we cannot criminalize sitting, sleeping or lying in public space when no sleeping place is practically available in any shelter. In that same meeting, council authorized the police department to enforce no camping ordinances when certain conditions are present, namely that there's an offer for spaces, shelter that meets their needs pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act and then outreach and notice to occupants provision of social services and then photography and safeguarding of personal property. However, the language has been scaled back through court decisions and also notes during, in the Boise decision that when shelter is unavailable, an ordinance prohibiting sitting, lying or sleeping outside at particular times or locations might be constitutionally permissible. Additionally, an ordinance barring the obstruction of public rights away or erection of certain structures may also be permissible. The issue of unhoused camping in public places is increasing. We're continuing to have inquiries from the public as far as what they can do about the homeless situation. And then of note, Los Angeles and some of them are making changes to their ordinances regarding camping, such as designating places, times, what constitutes personal property, barring tents in public areas, among others. So the discussion tonight is that the city's current code applies to public parks, recreation vehicles and obstruction of sidewalks and roads. New ordinances that we're seeing are focusing on categories of properties, including properties proximate to certain facilities like schools and daycare facilities. Again, the Boise is saying that we cannot prohibit camping in all public property, but may be able to prohibit camping in certain areas of properties. And so the recommendation is for council consideration, any direction on possible expansions, if that's the will of the council. And then staff will then come back and report on possible changes consistent with council's direction. That completes the presentation. Happy to address any comments or questions.
All right, thank you. Okay, so this is a discussion on, in the end, we're trying to look for a direction to, to staff on what we want to come back, that would be the possible action. So I'll start with, yeah, council members as you line up on the board and then I'll open the public comment. So Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Bryce, thank you, thank you for bringing this up. I know several of us had, had sort of this in mind here. But when you look at sort of the wording of it, it says camping, right? Where it might be perceived as, you know, and we've heard several residents talk about the homeless issue and especially around schools. The city of LA has something very similar to this, correct?
Correct, and we've included a copy of the ordinance inside the agenda packet.
No, I got that, I just wanted to sort of share with the public. So when you look at, and again, in your reviewing that sort of the ordinance that LA has, I mean, what were some of the things that came out of it for you that, that we could possibly, if, if it's the direction that we go, that might be beneficial to, to the residents of Gilroy who are, who are seriously concerned about this?
I don't think it, it would value as far as whether something is superior preferred. I can just kind of state what the ordinance changes essentially at a high level were. One was moving daycare centers and schools into a separate category from public parks and public facilities. The LA ordinance established a, a policy or procedure where the city council identifies certain locations as being designated as a no, no camping location. And then schools and daycares were in this ordinance change set as essentially all of them without having to have any kind of special designation, having that prohibition of 500 feet from the, from camping. Some of the other changes included some clarification on personal property. Items of personal property include tents and some other items as well. And then there's some cleanup language as well on the, like on the enforcement section as far as references. And those are the ones that are off the top of my head, I can't remember.
And I asked that question, I'm almost done, because I was able to reach out to a LA council member about this in general because obviously one of the concerns I had was obviously the safety of the homeless individuals there. And from what they told me, they worked very closely with, with them to make sure that, you know, that A, there's no harm, B, that they worked together, make sure that, you know, whatever items they have, that they'll be able to assist them in moving up, you know, to another location if, if that's what they choose. But I guess my last question is, does something like this address the concern that a few folks said here tonight about keep, keep these homeless encampments away from local schools?
I'd say potentially. Again, it would depend on the implementation and obviously how well it's followed and instance along that. It does seem to address some of the comments that were made earlier today.
May I respond a little bit to the Councilman Tovar's questions as well? The, the, what we presented in the staff report, the LA ordinance is kind of a roadmap of things that might be done. There's quite a bit of, of, there are quite, there are many terms in it, not all of which need to be adopted. The, there really is, as I see it, three kind of issues. It's a question of setting priorities for Gilroy. We currently ban camping primarily in public parks. A number of cities are starting to go beyond that and the Boise case seems to say we can go beyond it, provided we don't ban part camping on public property everywhere in the city. And in fact, there are several cases recently that have come out where the city has to establish that, all right, if they've, if camping cannot be allowed in certain areas, say for example, within 500 feet of schools, then it can be allowed somewhere. Now, the staff report talks about there being suitable areas, that might not be the right word to use. Boise uses the words practically available and that's probably a better approach. And if it's challenged in court, we have to be able to go to a court and say, here's a map of the city. If we tell somebody they can't camp on the sidewalk, there are other places they can go. We have to be able to say that all the ordinance will be struck down and there are several cases that have done that. So I think there's, there are three kinds of decision points to make, just to try to clarify the discussion. One is what are the off limits areas?
Right.
For example, LA prioritized what they perceive as conflicts between what they call adult living and children. So they, they prioritized keeping homeless encampments away from schools and parks, for example. As well as, as another example, certain kind of city infrastructure, bridges or overpasses where there are routes to school that children walk nearby or pedestrian bridge or something like that. They, they focus primarily on, on that as a major source of conflict. So one decision point is what kind of areas do, does Gilroy believe should be off limits? Blocking sidewalks, preventing ADA compliance, right of ways, schools, daycares. There are a variety of things that could be looked at. And again, the Los Angeles ordinance is kind of a checklist. The second is whether these things are self-executing or not. For example, the LA ordinance from a year ago banned camping near schools if the school had been designated by the city council as a specially sensitive location, same for daycares. And when we talked to people at the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office, they said the council got driven crazy by that ordinance because everybody was saying, why not my school? What about this school? What about that school? And that's why two weeks ago, at a very contentious meeting that you may have seen on the internet, where it was quite controversial, they took out the designation requirement. And so for schools and daycares, they made it an automatic 500 feet from all schools and all daycares. But so that's another issue. The issue is with respect to various kinds of city improvements or public property, should camping be banned on some automatic basis near it or only if the city designates it? As an example, again, in Los Angeles, for city infrastructure like overpasses, they, that's not automatic. They don't automatically ban camping near over, or under an overpass. But they can designate them again primarily if there are matters of public safety or children walking nearby, because they looked at it and said, well, many overpasses might be a good place for encampment. And the third issue after designation, whether it needs to be designated and posted, is what the violation should be. Staff, violations of our code are normally misdemeanors. However, Los Angeles, for example, allows citations or infractions, essentially parking tickets to be issued. And not all violations are misdemeanors automatically and they probably should not be. And there are several cases now where cities have forced, have required people to leave a certain area, but they haven't criminally prosecuted them. And when challenged, the court says that's okay because the Boise case, which is the one we're all worried about, really only deals with criminal enforcement. And so actually, to the extent we have an ordinance that we enforce by moving people on or requiring them to go somewhere else, but don't, don't arrest them and don't put them in the criminal justice system, that's technically not subject to Boise and there are several cases on this now. So that's a sort of a third level of complication is. So I, I think the three issues really are where, where the ordinance should apply, whether it, to what extent it's automatic versus some, the council has to give some prior action and designate them. And then the third is the penalties. And for that, we would invite, we would advise certainly on the penalty issue that we do something like LA has, which has a very flexible ordinance where the penalties don't even have to be criminal in order to enforce it. Anyway, that's a brief overview. I'd, it's partly in response to your question.
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Barco.
Yeah, Andy answered a lot of my questions. So Andy, I think we should try to keep it simple, whatever we do. If we just said we made an ordinance, no camping or loitering or anything within 500 feet of a school, daycare, nursery, whatever, would we be on good legal ground then? Because we're only saying just these areas?
I have two, two quick answers. One, one is you'll notice the LA ordinance doesn't actually use the word camping. One is, you'll notice the LA ordinance doesn't actually use the word camping. Councilman Tovar mentioned that. That's because cities that have tried to define camping have gotten into no end of trouble with the courts. It's very difficult to define. So they use sit, lie, sleep, store, use, maintain personally. So even though we're colloquially calling them no camping ordinance, we're not using those words. The second answer is, if it only applied to schools and daycares, and if we can draw a map showing that there are lots of areas in the city that are not so covered, that would be fine. I'm assuming that not every place in the city is within 500 feet of a school. I mean, if we had an ordinance that said within 3,000 feet of a school, probably that would not be, that would probably not work, because probably that would cover too much of the city, I would think. But that's something staff would have to figure out geographically.
Yes, go ahead, council member.
I was speaking with Andy before the meeting. Andy, can you tell the audience about what you said about if they start forming an encampment, and the police turn them up before they get established?
I made the comment that the kind of ordinance that LA has, which is this sort of self-executing ordinance, it will become a police and staff enforcement issue, because if somebody starts to set up a tent or move personal property onto a sidewalk in the wrong place, and the police are sort of on top of it and get them to move on quickly, I think that's fine under this kind of ordinance. If an encampment becomes established, and there are a number of people, and there are tents, and there's extensive storage of personal property, then it becomes much more complicated. It becomes clearing out an encampment, which is enforcing the ordinance, but it's sort of in a different category. It's more complicated. Suddenly, there's more notice has to be given, we have to worry about personal property. You can't clear that encampment unless you have shelter beds available for those people, probably. And so I think one thing to consider is that an ordinance like this will require a fair amount of vigilance to enforce it. Otherwise, encampments can spring up, and then they become kind of in a different category, which is a bit different than just enforcing keeping the sidewalks clear, for example.
Okay. Council member Armendaras.
Thank you. Thank you, Bryce. I'm wondering, besides staff, was any feedback solicited from the community or service providers to unhoused residents?
Not for the staff report.
Okay. And that is something I would like to see, you know, as we come back. Those are the folks who are most familiar with where the encampments are. You know, there's a lot of them that are not visible to the untrained eye. There's some very well-established encampments that I think would fall within 500 feet, so I'd like to, of a childcare center that I'm thinking of, but I'd like to include those childcare centers, right, as well as members of the unhoused community and service providers in making those decisions. And also, I'd love to see what timeline would be proposed in terms of notifying folks, giving them notice, so that they're allowed to pack up, you know, not in haste, not leaving a lot of trash behind, or important items behind medicines, ID, things like that. What kind of notice is given? Or would we be proposing to let people know that they have to move? Okay, thank you.
Council member Lurman Yosef.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Bryce, thank you as always for a well-documented report there. Andy, I'm going to turn to you for some of these questions. I'm still trying to, you know, put some contours around this concept here. There's a lot going on. And this idea around making camping space practically available is something that I'm struggling to understand. If we were to say, if we were to designate that within 500 feet of any school, there's no camping, do we have to make camping available somewhere else in a one-to-one square footage or size or something like that? So, I mean, do you understand what I'm saying? So if we're saying, we're designated, you know, 10,000 square feet is no longer camping space, do we have to give 10,000 feet somewhere else, or could we give a smaller parcel? Does it have to be an equal distribution? What is that?
I would say, no, it does not have to be equal. But there really are not cases, as you can appreciate, there isn't a case law on this. However, what we would have to do if we were challenged in court is say, look, when we are telling somebody they got to move off this sidewalk, there are other sidewalks they can go to judge, here's sort of a map of where they are. It doesn't have to be the same amount of space, I don't believe.
But does it have to be identical in nature? So you said sidewalk to sidewalk, could it be no sidewalk camping, but you can go, you know, I'm making it up, so please don't quote me, but like somewhere in Christians Hill Park or something like that?
I think we could make that argument, yes. I think our argument would be, it just has to be, I said, the Boise case used the words practically available. If an opponent came into court and said, look, under these rules, the only place people can go is some gully that's on, or something that's in a swamp, or a hillside where nobody can get to, that would not be practically available. But I don't believe it would have to be the same exact quantity or quality, but it has to be usable.
Okay, so when we talk about that usable space for, and I'm still using the term camping, even though I know that might not be the most accurate here, when we talk about that alternative camping space, even though we designate that as the alternative space, people, quote unquote, camping there, they still have to abide by all of the other rules that we have in our municipal code. And so, you know, no littering, no fires, no, you know, loud noise, all that kind of stuff, too. That doesn't put those on pause, correct? They still have to?
That's correct. Now, some cities have truly, like Oakland, for example, has designated some areas and says, these are camping areas. In other words, these are city improved sites, and I guess they are going to provide services, garbage pickup, they're going to provide social services. We don't have to do that. In other words, we don't actually have to say, here's a campground. What we have to be able to show a court, again, is that if we are saying you can't camp in certain areas, there are parts of the city, substantial parts of the city, that are available. We don't have to recommend those parts, or provide services for those parts.
Okay, I think I understand.
And cities differ greatly in how far they're going in that regard.
Right, so if I'm understanding you, we don't have to proactively identify where they could camp. It's just simply that there are spaces out there, you know, and we haven't prohibited camping in all spaces.
That's correct.
And that's sufficient. Okay. All right, I think I'm getting it. Thank you.
Council member Hilton.
Thank you. Bryce, would this be the police department or code enforcement doing this, as that even been discussed?
I'd have to defer probably to Andy, but I believe it would be the police department just because of seizing property, but I don't know for sure.
That would be something good to maybe get out. I'm generally in support of this, but I'd like to know.
I think the staff will have to figure that out, but it, most cities treat it primarily as a police enforcement issue, because it has to be done quickly and effectively.
The other thing, too, is environmental engineering. Like, what are we doing to get people that are in a space where we know it's unsafe? What are we going to, what are we doing, like, engineering-wise, to make sure that nothing comes back? Otherwise, we're literally just chasing our tail, like we have been for a long time. That's another, and I don't expect you to answer that, I'm just saying that that's another concern. And I also agree, too, that I would like to hear about the outreach to service providers, and, you know, get some feedback from them, and maybe even the quality-of-life officers, you know, going back. It'd be nice to, you know, hear some sort of report back from them. So I am a little confused on the map. It sounds like in the staff report, it says that we will, that we will basically map out the whole city and show where you're able to, show the court. I don't think the court, in my opinion, if we don't actually tell somebody, like, you can't go here, but we're going to allow you to go over here, if you're not showing them where to go or having services there, like in Oakland, they're literally just, they're going to go pop up in another place. We're not, this is not going to get rid of them. So in my opinion, I'd like to see that map, and I'm supportive of telling somebody they can't be here and that you can go there, but I don't want it to be like, well, you can go there, and then someone says, where's there? And it sounds like I just heard, I don't know, it's just not here. And to me, that doesn't sound like very good service. Thank you.
Council member Marx.
I think I need some clarification on this. So in Los Angeles, Andy, I guess this question's for you. Are they upholding the laws? You know, because there are many homeless people out there that are really good people, and they're law-abiding, and they're just trying to find a place to stay where they feel safe. But as we've heard from our law enforcement officers, many of our camps have some people in them that make it extremely unsafe. And I'm just really bothered by the fact, should I smile, Jan? Okay. I'm just really bothered by the fact that I would hate to see a criminal who has committed crimes against some of the homeless, moving into these same camps, because we're just moving a really bad problem around. I would want to see it safe for the citizens that live there, and I think we owe it to them. So my question is, I don't want to have people doing drugs openly, I don't want them dealing, I don't want them assaulting or raping victims. We've had two murders in the encampments over the last few months. Crime has to stop in the encampment. So what backup does our police force have in dealing with the criminal element in the encampments?
You asked me the question about what LA was doing, and without really having firsthand knowledge, I believe they're spending many, many millions of dollars doing what any other big city is doing. They're trying to find housing, they're trying to do enforcement, they're trying to do a whole variety of things. In terms of your specific questions, I think I would have to yield to the chief and ask him how he believes enforcement would work in practice.
If I'm, council member, if I'm understanding your question correctly, you're referring to those criminal acts that are perpetrated by folks in the unhoused community?
Right, and make it very unsafe for the other unhoused people to live there, and to the surrounding neighborhoods where one of these encampments might be.
Yeah, the crime is addressed regardless of whether they're unhoused or not, just like we've investigated those two homicides that you referred to, and a pretty violent rape down there, and, you know, we investigate it like any other crime in any other place in the city.
And what success are you having with the district attorney's office in actually prosecuting the criminal? Are they being locked up? Are they being released after a few days to return to the same area?
Well, that depends on the violation, you know, certainly a bill amount, and whether it's felony or misdemeanor or infraction. But we've had our challenges, where we've arrested some of the same folks over and over again, and they're out, but that...
And see, that's what's bothering me, our criminal system is failing, because your hands are tight. Not really.
Look, okay, I'm in, yeah. Council member Armendaras, can you please let me run the meeting? Thank you. Okay. But yes, council, we are here to direct staff to come back with a report, we're not here to hash out details that the council, as a majority, hasn't decided we're asking staff to bring back. Okay? So council member Tovar, you've already gone.
I'm waiting my turn.
Okay, I know, but you've, actually, both of you have already gone. I would like to make some comments, and then I would like to go to the public, so that we, the public isn't waiting so long, and then we can all talk again.
That works.
Okay? Where I'm leaning, because I just want to share, because I'm hearing everybody else, I want to share what I'm thinking before hearing from the public, and that is to direct staff to come back with a no, with a no sitting, lying, sleeping outside ordinance, or addition to our ordinance, within 500 feet of schools, daycares, or any area where children are present or reasonably expected to be present. And that does come directly from the adult living that's referred to in the Los Angeles case, not being compatible with kids. And then I'd say the same, no lying, sitting, or sleeping, where public safety is compromised by obstructing passage for public safety personnel, persons with disabilities, or by compromising structural integrity of public infrastructure, such as bridges, storm drains, railways, levees, utility cables, things like that that we know get cut. Because I want to reiterate that living out the universal and unavoidable consequence of being human is not how things end up in council chambers. Okay? They're here in council chambers because of the criminal element that's going on, and that's what we're trying to address here. So that's...
May I make one comment?
Yes.
I think everything you said is doable, but the part that may be difficult is the catch-all for children, any area where children are present, because we're going to have a great deal of difficulty defining that and locating it on a map.
Right, well, that's what I was thinking, or reasonably expected to be present. What I was thinking of was parks, playgrounds.
Well, we ought to say parks. I think we're, I think...
That's what I was getting at.
I think we would have to make a better definition than that, so we can work on that.
Okay. So, that being said, I would like to open public comment.
I have six speaker cards, Madam Mayor. The first one is Jan Berstein-Hargan, followed by Ron Kirkish, followed by Ariseli Vaqueta.
Hello, council, thank you. I want to just remind everybody that there may be some children actually staying in encampments, so barring encampments near children, you know, we have to keep in mind that some of the people who need the encampment space are children with their parents. But overall, you know, as a service provider, you know, it's reasonable to designate places around schools as non-camping areas, if we can tell people where they can go. And usually when there's a sweep, the first question people ask is, okay, where can we go? So I think defining the areas is incredibly important. It's not enough to just say, just not here, because, you know, the majority of people do want to comply, so we should give them a way to do that. Also, that gives everybody predictability, gives the city predictability, gives the community predictability, you know where people are going to be allowed to be, where they're not going to be allowed to be. It gives them a chance to, gives people a chance to follow the law, because they know what it is. So I do think these maps should be public and available. We should be able to know, you know, what's allowed and what isn't allowed. It'll also make it easier to provide services, such as then garbage pickup, you know, schedule the garbage pickups, and figure out where's bathroom access, and other things that really could mitigate the impacts of our housing crisis while we're solving it. Because, you know, as the city attorney said, you know, the solution is actually to solve the problem, but we need to mitigate the impacts on the community while we're doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ron Kirkish, followed by Ariseli Vaqueta, followed by Eric Jacobson.
Good evening again, Mayor and council and community. As you know, these encampments, they have drugs, they've got heroin, meth, fentanyl, all kinds of drugs. When cities up and down California, including San Jose, decided where to put their marijuana dispensaries, they drew a circle, and that circle was 1,000 feet, not 500 feet. And we know that these homeless camps are drug-infested, as, and for the same reason, they didn't want marijuana facilities within 1,000 feet of a school, a church, or any other thing. So when you say 500 feet, I know we're a small community, but I still think that 1,000 feet should be considered, so that that would include a larger area, which include other neighborhoods, that the people probably would appreciate being included within that exclusion zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ariseli Vaqueta, followed by Eric Jacobson, followed by Valentina Banalis.
Good evening, everybody. First off, I want to commend to all of you for actually taking this on. You all know that I'm new to Gilroy. But because I'm very, very specific, something that I haven't heard, and I know that parks is included in that ordinance, is playgrounds. I don't know if you saw my children, but they play in those playgrounds, and so I just want to keep it safe for them. And I also, I'm glad I'm hearing about the collaboration with the service providers, because like one of the young ladies said, you know, they are human beings with needs, and we want to meet those needs, but we also want to keep the entire community safe. So I commend all of you for taking it on and hoping for a viable solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Eric Jacobson.
Thank you for hearing me again. I had one other recommendation, and then some work advice. I work in Fremont, where they have designated areas and industrial areas of their city. So I manage a facility in one of those areas, and that's where they say that is a safe sitting, camping, you know, homeless zone. I keep some away from all the schools and all the parks, you know, with, you know, just being that it's in the industrial area, they have plenty of room, they bring dumpsters, and they have porta-potties for the homeless to utilize. And then in regards to the parks and the school zones, I'd also ask you to think about, all these schools have designated walk paths in their neighborhoods, and these are where they tell the children to walk home. So it's a designated walk area, and I know one school in particular that... And I know one school in particular, that walk path goes right through a homeless camp. And these are, these are young children that can't defend themselves. That's where they're told they're supposed to walk home. And that should also be probably looked at. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Valentina Ranales, followed by Sali Armadere, followed by Maria Delgado.
Good evening again. I think as we address this, like I am a strong advocate to press this ordinance. Not only was there six fires next to Gilroy Prep, but there was an exposure where a man had his genitals out against the fence. So I think it's a no-brainer. What I am seeing is that there's kind of like the underbelly of the issue of accessibility for our community, for our vulnerable community here in Gilroy. So as we speak about this, I know that Dion and Carol, we talked about it in the City Hall, little City Hall meeting about the hospital getting services here to where we do have rehab services here in Gilroy that service Gilroy, that we do have mental health here in Gilroy that services Gilroy, the youth center on the east side. Get them while they're young. Give them alternatives so that we don't have this route of being on the streets, being involved in drugs, making sure that our community is well focused on our youth on all sides of Gilroy. It is, it is, it is a very big issue, and it's like you cut off one head and another head pops up on this three-headed dragon. I understand that it's very in-depth, and it's not just gonna, putting in ordinance isn't going to solve this issue. Like, it'll help the schools and for hindsight, visual, yes, great, we did something, but also reiterating that there is a lack of services here in Gilroy that coincide with the homeless population that is here in Gilroy. And unfortunately, it's not going to get better as the years progress. This situation isn't going to go away. More people are being populated. More housing is getting upper and upper. That wealth gap is getting bigger and bigger. And so I commend everyone for having this open conversation, but I would also implore everyone to really realize when we have the other conversations about services within our community that we realize that it really does go hand in hand, and we can't just complain about the unhoused and just, you can't just banish a whole set of community, whether you consider them undesirable or not. We have to make sure that we're including a safety net that is gonna help not only those that are here now, but those who are looking, because I know personally, one paycheck away from being homeless myself. I have this conversation with my kids all the time. It is hard times right now to make it in this society that we have. And so just making sure that as we delve in these conversations, we are including those safety nets for not only our problem that's existing now, but the potential problem down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Sali Armadere, followed by Maria Delgado, lastly Bill O'Connor.
Hello, my name is Sali Armadere, and I'm here. Everything that we've heard today, we've heard every single meeting for the last couple of years. There's nothing new, you know, and we talk about the homeless, like, they're not part of our community, but they are. And a couple of people that got up here said, you know, we should have, I think the one right before Valentina, where he works, they have a designated area. Why can't we have a designated area? And, you know, we have enough to put up statues and flags. We can work a way to try to house our own people because they are our own people. But I also wanted to address what Valentina said about the youth center, how that is a, that youth center on the east side at San Isidro Park, that's a trailer, you know? That's a little trailer. Why don't we address that? Because we have apartments, the Alexander Apartments, what, 350 apartments? And if you put two children in each one of those, how many is that? And that's right by that little so-called youth center. You know, you have the Roger Street Apartments. You know, these are all low-income people. They're, like she said, they're a paycheck away from being homeless, you know? You have to address the east side. I don't care if it's the homeless. I don't care if it's a youth center. I don't care if it's medical, whatever it is. Those people have just as much right and just as much right to your representation as the people that live at Eagle Ridge or off of Longview. You know, we are one community. Don't pretend that we're not. And about what the gentleman, I think he's a gentleman, what's his name was saying about drug addicts and all that. People who are drug addicts, they become rehab, you know, they make something out of their life. They get arrested. You know, they change their life. Give them the opportunity. But another thing I wanted to address is what Carol Mark said. She turned around and asked the chief, "What do you do with these criminals? Do you put them in jail? Don't you throw them in jail?" Well, he arrests them. That's his job. But you, as a councilperson, should know that he sends a report to the district attorney, and it's the district attorney that prosecutes it, not the police officer. They're doing their job. And that's what I have to say. These people that are homeless deserve a home like you do.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Maria Delgado.
Good evening, everyone. This is my first meeting ever. I've been a Gilroy resident for almost 20 years, and there's a lot going on. I am a little bit embarrassed to say that I'm not touched by many of these issues. I'm fortunate. I live in a safe neighborhood, and I don't have to worry about the homeless, and I feel comfortable, and I don't come out and, you know, realize how many issues Gilroy does have. Obviously, we're not going to solve them in one meeting today, and it sounds like you guys have been trying to solve all the issues for quite some time. I did want to speak on this issue, and kind of what I was thinking was that perhaps maybe, and I don't know, this may be already be done, but if somebody can go out and find out who our unhoused population is and sort of find who the families are, find the criminal element, and, yes, they do need a safe space as well, because there are kids who I imagine are unhoused and are part of this community, are going to school with my child and your children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews. So their lives do matter, and I understand also, though, that there is a lot of mental health issues within the unhoused community also. So if we can just kind of identify what's going on and who's who and try to help. And I do think, you know, it's scary. I have a five-year-old. When we see somebody who has mental health issues, who's swinging in the air, and my child's like, "What's going on with that person?" You know, so I can't imagine having to walk my child to school and having to deal with somebody verbally assaulting me in front of my five-year-old. Like, that's just traumatizing for all parties involved. So, like I said, I know that it's not going to be easily solved. I also support our law enforcement. I think they're trying, and that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Bill O'Connor.
Is there someone after that?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I like this approach we're taking where we're looking at where we don't want the homeless. If somebody came to me then and said, "Okay, you got to solve it," listening, what I'm hearing now is I would come in and say, "Okay," the first thing I would do, and after following her up, is, you know, what is the number? How many people do we have to house? Okay, so that here's the number we have to address. And instead of saying, "I don't want you here," where do I want you? And if, you know, if the number's 600, and I'm just making that up, okay, where would I house 600 people? And take that approach for it, and look at what you have in the way of public property, and say, "What in our considerations are the best sites to do that?" I mean, because you might pick some sites. There might have other sites that would be okay that aren't a problem, but there's other places you'd rather have them. And so look at, you know, go through whatever your problem is, and where am I going to put it? Okay? And then what kind of services I'm going to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so closing public comment. So now I'm going to go back to the lineup and start with Councilmember Armadere.
Thank you.
And I want to thank the public for their thoughtful comments and analysis, right, of what's happening in our community. I think we've heard best practices from other cities, from our housing, our service providers, and we know that the key to successful housing services, right, getting people actually into apartments, into homes, is stability, is the ability of the service providers to find them. And so I think Jan brought it up, that having an actual place to direct people after a sweep or during the sweep is key to that. When there is a sweep, it becomes counterproductive, because then the caseworkers or the service provider representatives can't find the person that they got on the list and they found housing for, or they've, you know, qualified for services. So I think it's important that if we do this, that we be proactive in that, that we're providing somewhere, designating it, making sure that people are informed about where they can camp so that they will have that stability, providers can find them and get them housed, you know, and address the problem in a way that solutions focus. That's what I would ask. And also, like one of our speakers said, it would be great if, like our other cities who do have best practices, provide porta-potties, provide a trash bin so that we're preventing some of the worst and unhealthy issues that arise out of encampments. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually going to make a motion, but I realized it's direction, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. And thank you, Councilmember Armadere, for those comments. But I do have to comment, some of the words that were said earlier regarding, made it seem as the entire council didn't care about these individuals or didn't necessarily see them as part of our community, which I think is the furthest from the truth, because we wouldn't be having this discussion over and over and over again, trying to find best solutions, you know? So I commend the entire council for continuing to take this on and for really truly caring about these individuals, because I think we all do. So I want to make sure that the public knows that any comments about this, that this council may not care about the homeless is a lie. Anyhow, that being said, I guess this question is for Andy, or when it comes to sort of what we're talking about, the ordinance here. And I think for me, I think I would like to look at 1,000, 1,000 feet. I'll tell you why. This is a public property, but what if, if that 500 feet or 1,000 feet expand into county land, which, as we know, several of the encampments are in county land, and we can't really do much about it. If that were the case, if it was 500 or 1,000, what, you know, what can we do in regards to that? Do we just walk away from that? Or, because as we know, the county isn't going to do much. So I guess if it extends into county property, would we still be able to enforce whatever penalties we decide to do?
That's, excuse me, that's an interesting question. And to the extent it's not Gilroy public property, I don't believe we could enforce our, we can enforce criminal ordinances along the way, but we can't, I don't believe we can enforce the no camping ordinance on the county, on a county public property. We obviously would have to work with the county cooperatively and try to isolate exactly which properties are an issue in a situation like that, I would think.
Right. And I bring this up, and I didn't expect you to have the answer. I mean, it's really a difficult question, but I think looking forward, obviously, I mean, because we see a lot of the encampments, and most of them, if not all of them, are on county property. So even if we were to create something, I'm just concerned that, you know, that it may extend into county land, and we're not going to be able to enforce anything that we decide to do. So it's just a question to think about, because obviously, they're absolutely right. We would have to work with resources, but also we have to look at other places that they may be able to go. But does that mean county property, or does that mean somewhere within Gilroy? So again, those are questions, obviously, that we would have to figure out.
Yeah. We don't have jurisdiction outside of Gilroy.
Yeah.
So you could say it, but it would have no jurisdiction.
Can I ask a Councilmember a question about that, Mayor?
Sure.
Councilmember Tovar, how would extending from 500 to 1,000 feet, I think that would, that would raise the risk of us pushing them to out of our jurisdiction instead of minimizing that, right? So pushing them further out is going to make it more likely that they're on valley waterland or county land, not within our jurisdiction, or able to do anything about that.
Right. No, no, I agree with you. But, you know, again, listening to the residents, have you heard it here twice in regards to that 500 feet, 1,000 feet? You know, obviously, if I have my child walking down a pathway that's supposed to be their way home, and it's further than 500 square, 500 feet, I mean, basically we're saying after 500 feet-
That's a lot. 500 feet is a lot. Okay, let's, yeah, let's table that for now. Okay. Councilmember Bracco?
On that, the distance, I think if you put a 1,000-foot circle around every school in Gilroy, would pretty much cover the whole city. 500 feet is a lot. One of the speakers mentioned about using St. Louis that she learned at one of me and Carol's town halls. And I just wanted to say, I have been working with Supervisor Wasserman's office on providing mental and drug services at the hospital. When the county bought the hospitals, that was their original plan, was to build a facility up there. So he's getting that rolling while he's still in office so that when he's gone, they'll have a hard time stopping it. The county will keep working on that. And one thing I wanted to bring up, especially with the cleanup we did this weekend, unless we get out there and enforce it, it's just wasting time if you clean it all up and then let them start moving back in. I would like to hear from quality-of-life officers as to what they're doing, because I don't see that they're really doing a lot. And from what I've heard, I've received several phone calls, people calling, wanting to talk to them, and they never return their calls. So that's a problem if that's happening. I'm not saying it's happening, but if it is, we have a problem.
Okay. Also, a separate thing, though, from this, right?
Well, it's part of the homeless.
Right. But we want to, what we're trying to get at here is, what we'll get to at the end, is how many, what is the council majority, how is the council majority directing staff with specific things to come back? So everybody is saying their thing, but in the end, we're going to have to see who wants, who wants staff to come back with what? How many? Not who, but how many? So I will try to get that. And if what you want, if what you're saying is that part of this report for you is going to be addressing what the quality-of-life officers do.
I'll bring that up in-
Yeah, I just think that'd be, that's a kind of a separate thing, myself. But, okay. Councilmember LaRoma Yosef.
Yeah, I was actually going to build exactly on that last point, too. I'd certainly like to see what the options are for how to enforce this.
Yes.
If this is going to be, we're passively waiting for calls to come in, and then we respond to those calls, or if there's active, you know, patrolling or reviewing of sites and things like that. I mean, I think we all recognize, just within our own experiences, that homelessness issues and safety issues are among those that we hear the most from our residents on. So I would put this right at the top of our quality-of-life priorities. I think that I would personally like to see, as several of others have referenced, that staff identify sites for that camping, again, allowing for people to be in compliance, and they need to know where they can go in order to do that. So identifying what potential sites might be, I mean, we'll probably have that discussion about what those are, but at least identifying what that range of options looks like as well. So that would be fair.
Okay. Then my comments again, the second round. Right, everybody else has already gone, okay? One speaker said something about children who are unhoused, and I wanted to point out that we were just told, right, by the Office of Support of Housing, when Consuelo Hernandez was here, that as far as children in the system go, they are housed. There are no children in the system that are not housed. We cannot know about those who are not in the system. So if they're not in the system, that means they're being either hidden from the system or they're not being placed in the system intentionally. So that is a more difficult thing, of course, to be addressed when we don't know, when nobody, when people don't want them in the system. Okay? And the other thing I want to say is, I mean, I too would support with staff coming back with enforcement, but I don't support myself sanctioned encampments. And that's really what I'm hearing some people say, even though you haven't used that word. If you're going to have a map that specifically says where people can go, you are, that is sanctioning an encampment. And the reason I don't support that is because we don't even have the money for the safe parking request that we were given. It takes money, and I don't have a problem with asking the voters for the money, not at all. But when the people of Gilroy, with the money that they give us already in the general fund, expect- general fund, expect us to be using that money for essential city services first, and then we go and come up with some idea that takes away from the streets and the police and all that without asking them, that is where I differ. Because a sanctioned encampment is not just designating a space and then walking away. There is a lot of cost, millions of dollars, that go into managing that kind of thing. And that is why I don't support that effort unless you've asked the voters for the money. Because no money comes to the city. All the money goes to the county or the state and we all are trying to do the best we can. Councilor Tovar and I heard this over and over and over at this conference. This is California-wide. We're all playing this waiting game for something higher up to help us out, you know, money that comes to us. But right now, we don't even have it for safe parking. So that is why I do not support specifically identifying an area that is sanctioned. But I do support, as I said before, and if we're ready to start giving some direction, I can start with what I've heard and then people can chime in with what they want to add and see if that's, if we've got a thumbs up to, to add those things. Okay? So I think we're starting out with the, no, we want, we want staff to come back with a no lying sitting or sleeping outside within.
I think you can use the word camping in, in the direction.
Oh, in the direction, I can use camping. Okay, so I'll use it, okay. Within 500 feet, right? Not, not 1,000 feet. So we're saying within 500 feet of schools, daycares, or playgrounds, or whatever wording you want to use that basically says where children are likely to be, where, where children are expected to be, not likely, but expected to be. You would expect a playground that's meant for, you know, little kids to, to have kids. And that no camping where public safety is compromised by obstructing the passage of public safety personnel, persons with disabilities, or by compromising the structural integrity of public infrastructure such as bridges. We haven't heard that, what we found when we did clear out the IOFO encampment, but you're gonna, you're about to hear that. So, such as bridges, storm drains, railways, levees, utility cables, things of that nature. And I, I don't think we need to say anything else to staff about the, the criminal element because as I said, this whole discussion does not end up in council chambers if it weren't for the criminal element. That's, that's why it ends up here. And so that's the, the, the truth of, of why it ends up here. Now, what did I miss in what I've just said? Or that somebody else wants to, so who supports what I've said?
Mayor, what about creeks? Do you want to add that?
Well, we don't own, I don't think we own creeks.
We own, the city of Gilroy owns, I think from virtual all the way south of Yubis Creek. That is Gilroy property according to the Water District.
Okay, so you want to add that for staff to look at?
Well, the only reason why I'm saying that is because that is the water supply for people south of us. And if they're going, using it to go to the bathroom, they have dumped three cars in there, it's going to harm the water supply.
I, I understand.
That's an environmental issue.
I, I understand that. It's just these things are happening anyway, everywhere. I don't, okay, okay. So, yeah, I just need to know who supports what.
Can I ask a question? I mean, I, I support, I just want to ask a question because obviously, the top priority here obviously is we were thinking about our, our, our kids, our youth and their safety, you know, and would this apply to parks?
Yeah.
It already does.
We're, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Parts in general, yeah.
Where, because kids would play in parks.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's clear, okay.
Yeah. Or whatever, it's, what the staff will come back, will be reviewing what they, but the message we are sending is where children exist.
That's perfect.
Okay, I mean, are, are, are meant to exist. So let's see a thumbs up for what I've said so far.
Do you mean including the creeks or not?
I, does anyone want to, can we include? I don't care either way. We can direct staff to look at that and they'll just come back to us.
Just to look at it.
Well, that's what all this is, is for staff to come back with something. So, okay, so we're unanimous in that. Okay? So I, then, we are not directing staff then, I want to be clear, to come back with a map that is sanctioning locations. Okay? All right, then that's it.
Well, there was other things, I thought that we would discuss additional things.
Like what?
Separately from what you had said.
Okay, well, so what I just said, we have unanimous, so that's good. So you've got something else? What, what is your something else?
So some of the things that I asked for are provide, service provider feedback, porta potties and trash bins, and that it include ample notice based on best practices, allowing, which will allow folks, you know, ample time to move and pack. Yeah, that's what I would like.
Okay, I, speaking for myself, not, don't, I don't support those at this stage. I think we're already addressing those kinds of things when we have to move encampments. Oh, we, they're not in.
May I comment that?
Please.
First of all, there's already extensive notice provisions in the police manual, which the chief enforces.
It's three days.
No, no, it's, it's more than that. It's, it's usually seven days. The LA ordinance has notice for removing personal property too. Some of it's obviously up to 14 in the mayor ordinance. We'll have to look at that, but it certainly will, it certainly will have to contain notice provisions. So I don't know exactly what, what they should be at this point, but we'll have to draft something because the law will require that.
So that'll be in there anyway?
That will be there in there anyway.
Right.
Right, right.
Okay. And yeah, things like putting porta potties at dumpsters, we have done that so many times in places and we know that that, well, anyway, like I said, I, I, I do not support that, but the rest of, if, if there's somebody else here who is supporting what Councilmember Armadere is suggesting, this would be the time to say so. Okay. I do, I do remember hearing though, someone, was it Councilmember, somebody asked about enforcement. I do think if the council supports, that part of what we hear back from staff ought to include how whatever it is they suggest is enforceable. How, how, how does it get enforced? Who's, who's addressing it? What's the pack? Even if it's an impossible task, what is the procedure for enforcement?
Or even what the options for enforcement may look like. Again, whether it's passively waiting for, you know, calls for service or actively going out.
Right. Okay, so is there a thumbs up to add that? Okay.
I have one I want to add too.
Okay, I see you on the board, yes, Councilmember Hilton.
It was about the environmental engineering of repeat people coming back to the same spot so we're not doing it over and over and over. What, what would be the plan to, you know, to, whatever you want to do so we don't have to keep going back to the same thing?
I was going to bring that up if it doesn't.
Yeah, I, I, I think that comes, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we'll, that will come back to us in, in what we've already directed staff to do because as Andy told us earlier, the only way we're going to be able to actually make use of these places where we're saying you may not camp lieset or has, will, will be dependent upon our ability to get there in the very early stages. Once an encampment has formed, we're going to be back to where we are right now. Isn't that what you said, Andy? We'll be back to where we are right now, which is having to go through all this notice stuff and having to find a shelter bed and that sort of thing. So all this is doing, or all we are trying to do with what staff is going to come back to us with, is see if we can avoid encampments starting in the first place in the areas that we are saying it is not safe.
So I think in that regard, Councilmember Hilton's concerns are probably part of the enforcement question.
That's what I was, yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
Wrapped into it, I would think.
As long as it's wrapped into it.
Well, that's what's going to come back from staff and that's when we'll, if it's not, then we say something then. But we are all in agreement that we want that information.
And I, I have one clarifying question too. So if we're not creating space, if we're not going to identify space, how is this even going to be enforceable? How is this going, and how are we, how would we win if this is challenged? If we don't create space? Because what, what, what are the police officers going to say? And what is staff going to say? Well, you can't go here and, and there's no place for them to go.
Okay, so what, what is going to be coming back from staff, and jump in if you need to, is a, is showing that what we are, the locations we are banning is not consuming the, all of the public property. That's what we have to be able to show.
It, it is a fine line though because one person looks and says, well, if I can't go here, then I can go here, so you're telling me this is okay?
Yeah.
And there is, what, what I'm hearing the council wanting, I think, is to say, we don't want to say this, these, this is the right place to do an encampment. This is a good idea, which some cities have done and is possible to do. But we at least want to be, but we will have, we will have to be able to say, if you can't do it here, this is the parts of the city where it is allowed. Whether or not we think it's a good idea or whether the city's going to provide services is, is another question. But it, it is a flip side and, and it's, it can be, it, it will be confusing.
Yeah, and it doesn't solve homelessness either.
Okay. Are we moving on? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, oh yeah, do you want to talk about the, yes, bring it up now?
Thank, no, actually, I want to repeat what I've, excuse me, what I've heard because I, I do want to let council know this is going to be a marathon, not a sprint. We are figuring this out with you and we are getting some things right and we're not getting some things right. And I think that's just, we're all trying to do better. So we will return with this information with you, but please understand that there will be other things that we'll have to address based on what we bring back. So I just want to make sure the direction for now is clear and that we return with what you're expecting and then the areas that we don't have, we'll, we'll have to continue to work on. But right now, as I understand the council, the majority is that no camping within 500 feet and we have to define camping or, in some language, schools, daycares, playgrounds, or places that children are expected. It does not restrict public safety access or infrastructure access or safety. We will look at creeks. We, that, that is a rather complicated one. Most of the creeks are not ours, some of them are, and so we, we will bring you back. And then we can restate what, I think what would help too, as you're talking about the enforcement, would be helpful is that we state to you how we do it now. And we're going to talk about IOF here in just a second, but how we do it now and if, what changes if you enact that ordinance? And so I did hear questions about proactive and reactive and returning campers and issues like that. We don't have all the answers for those, but it's something we'll bring back to council to start the conversation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, that's agenda, that was 10.1, so we are moving on to 11.1. Thank you, everybody. Thank you to the public for all coming and sharing your thoughts. All right, 11.1 is approval of an exclusive negotiating agreement by and between select contracts and the city of Gilroy in order to assess opportunities for development of the 536 acres of hillside property at Gilroy Gardens proposed to be renamed the Recreation Gateway Area. And Jimmy's going to give us the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor of the City Council. This is a very short report concerning select contracts. We've talked about this potential project now for about four years. And in 2018, 19, the city did conduct an RFP process to evaluate vendors and we did receive two responses for the property and which we recommended, one being select contracts to provide ideas and options on what to do with, with that property. And the general theme was some type of outdoor mountain biking type of, of a facility. In 2019, 2020, we experienced COVID and so this went kind of on the back burner. And then when we returned, we were required by the State Surplus Lands Act to make this property available for affordable housing developers. And so we went through that process. We did not receive any offers or bids or any negotiations from a, a affordable housing developer. However, the county requested that we work with them in order to develop trails that connect current trails and, and we were very enthusiastic about that, but felt that that could be, could be accomplished within this project as well. So we still have a dialogue with the county about connecting trails and, but feel it can work within this particular program, or I'm sorry, project. The State Surplus Lands Act process was completed in March and since that time, we've been working with select contracts to get the language suitable for both parties. The E and A process is, is unusual to select contracts. And so this was their first time they had really done one of these. And so what this does is it gives us about 12 months for both parties to examine the business side of the potential project and without, you know, we need to see what they propose financially and they would like to see how, how we're evaluating that. And that's done best when it's exclusive. So we're not being shopped against other potential places or, or such. We have an agreement that it's exclusive and it's a time period. This proposal for select contracts would, would only be in the discussion phase at this point. So you're not approving any project, you're just, you're just giving your authority to enter into negotiations and anything that would be needed to enter into a formal agreement for the use of the city land would come back to the city council. So we would expect that to be completed within 12 months and then identify a project and go through the process of recommending or not recommending to the city council. The second part you're being asked tonight is to consider a recommendation from the Gilroy Economic Development Partnership. They hate the name, the 536, and they should because it's not even 536 acres. It's been adjusted due to, you know, some carve outs, so the name really doesn't make any sense. So we are part of the Gilroy Economic Development Partnership, so we don't really like it either. And so we're asking that, you know, council consider the renaming of the area as Recreation Gateway Area. It seems like an appropriate name and one that will identify that area as opposed to the 536 or the 521 or the 517, or I don't even remember where we're at. So those are the two items we'd ask council to consider tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions and looking forward to your, we're recommending approval.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. I just want to remind council and the public that this agenda item is to decide to enter into an agreement. It is not about what exactly the bike trails are and whether, whether, what it's going to be. It's not about defining the project, it's about starting the process to define the project. So questions of Jimmy, anybody? Okay, then I'll.
Mayor, oh, sorry, I was going to make a motion for approval.
Now I got to go to public. Public comment, anybody?
I received one public comment card.
Okay.
It's Kelly, forgive me, O'Gier.
Okay, all right. You have three minutes and it should be on the clock in front of you. Okay.
Good evening, my name is Kelly O'Shea and I'm a resident here in Gilroy.
Can you just be closer to the mic so we can?
I am asking you guys to vote in favor of the Gilroy Adventure Park proposal this evening. I have been sitting on the Board of Directors for Girls Rock Women's Mountain Biking Organization in Santa Cruz and I can tell you firsthand that this Gilroy Adventure Park has so many positive attributes for our community. Not only would this proposal bring jobs as well as generate taxes like sales and transient taxes through hotel stays, but it also gives Gilroy a unique offering over all of its neighbors. It would lift our community up, but still let Gilroy retain its charm and its environmental friendliness. According to the Bureau of Economic Analysis at the U.S. Department of Commerce, the U.S. data shows that the outdoor recreation economy accounted for 1.8 or $374.3 billion of the GDP for the nation in 2020. New participant entries into outdoor recreation are up 26% since January 2020. Remote work is now allowing many to participate in the outdoors for the first time during hours when they would have been commuting to work or perhaps on their lunch hour. Ray Williams, who's the executive director of the Sierra Buttes Trail stewardship, did a brilliant presentation in 2017 and many since that discussed how trail building had saved many small California communities from the brink of collapse like Downeyville, Gray Eagle, and even Quincy. Mountain biking pumps in more than $26 billion a year into the U.S. economy. Fun fact, there are more mountain bikers in the U.S. than golfers now. Over 50 million Americans enjoy mountain biking. That number does not account for all the hikers, the equestrians, all of the other outdoor recreation categories that select contracts would probably include from their talk two years ago that I attended. Gilroy has a unique aesthetic and an adventure park does not change the landscape the way a full-scale amusement park or other bold proposals would. It would provide benefit to local community and attract tourism to the city. We need to view this proposal with a positive lens. Gilroy has a key advantage over other cities. Outdoor recreation is an integral part of the culture of the Bay Area and extremely lucrative to engaging the communities that support it. This land will not go undeveloped and it is important that we choose wisely and truly make Gilroy.
I'm sorry.
The gateway to recreation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, any others?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
All right.
All right, Mayor. So I'd like to make an, make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
I was going to read it out, but exclusive agreement with select contracts in the city of Gilroy.
Okay, so that'd be item A.
And I suggest two separate motions, two separate.
Yes, yes. So just for, so this is a motion for item A and we can do it digitally. This is to approve the exclusive negotiating agreement, okay? And that passes unanimously. All right, do I have a second motion to rename the 536 project to Recreation Gateway Area?
So moved.
Okay, who wants credit for the move and who wants credit for the second?
I'll second.
Go ahead. Okay. Councilmember LaRoma Yose made Councilmember Arminder a second. Although you each said the revert, you each appointed the other to do it. So just to be quick, okay. If we agree on. Everybody go ahead and vote. And who are we missing? Is it me? No. Okay, so that unanimously passes as well. All right, 11.2, award of contract to W Trans for downtown parking management plan. And Gary's going to give us this staff report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council and the public. My name is Gary Heep. I'm with the Public Works Department. I have for you this evening award of contract to W Trans for the downtown parking management plan. First off, let's look at the downtown here. Here's an aerial of the downtown with the eight or nine, I think, believe it's 10 now, parking lots identified, including the new Eagleberry parking lot that you see as lot three there in the middle at the bottom of the map. In total, this accounts for about 516 off-street public parking spaces. It should also be noted, we have about 560 on-street parking spaces in these same area. So looking at previous parking study events, because we've done a number of those over the years. Back in 2005, we have records that show there was parking, a study that was completed as part of the downtown specific plan preparation. Subsequent parking surveys were completed in 2006 and 2007. It included recommendations, but those were never brought before council for approval or adoption. These efforts all indicated that parking capacity was exceeded in some areas of the downtown core during peak hours, both during the weekend, on the weekends, and typically at lunchtime during the week, in the evenings during the weekend, Saturday mornings, which is, I don't believe, surprised anybody here. Each effort did speak to the need for a future need to develop a specific downtown parking management plan in the future. In 2014, the city received grant funding and worked with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, or MTC, to conduct another parking utilization in the downtown. Initial findings were presented in October of 2015 to council. The study determined that ample on-street parking does exist through the downtown, as we know, although certain public parking areas reached capacity during peak times. Again, nothing different from the 2005 or 2006 study. The study did go on to say specifically that the city would do well to follow up on this initial utilization review with a comprehensive plan to evaluate parking time limits, provide adequate demand and management measures, and identify locations for future investment. And that is what is before you this evening. In 2018, the Gilroy Downtown Business Association also conducted a study that was titled Parking in the Downtown. It included a summary of outreach to businesses conducted by the GDVA and provided some anecdotal information regarding how current parking practices impacted the downtown and its users. It did provide a number of short and long-term recommendations, key of which are identified here. Approval of a budget for a parking management plan. Rollout of parking enforcement related to the plan and future development in the downtown. Development of public-private shared parking opportunities. And then incorporation of smart parking technologies to improve utilization. And all these items are considered and included in the scope of the item this evening. In terms of downtown parking enforcement, in 2005, council directed the police department to implement a pilot program for the two-hour parking in the downtown core area, Monterey, between 4th and 6th roughly, and Eagleberry to Railroad Street. Periodic enforcement succeeded in freeing up much of the high turnover parking in the downtown, which is expected. Unfortunately, the pilot effort was suspended in 2007 due to a downturn in the economy. And there's been limited parking enforcement in the downtown since. Now, why do we need a parking plan? Well, first, we need to update the parking utilization counts, both on the private lots and the public lots in the downtown area. We need to conduct an economic analysis of the cost of parking in the downtown and identify future funding opportunities. And that will be completed by the economist that is on the team. We need to create a fund, funded enforcement program for our police department. We need to evaluate and streamline our current parking codes, which are somewhat outdated. We need to develop short and long-term strategies for downtown parking. We need to coordinate parking with the upcoming downtown strategic plan and also look at the parking needs and coordinate with the future downtown high-speed rail station. And lastly, we will have a formal document at that point, at the end of the program, to bring back to the city council for review and approval. So we know that enhancement of the downtown is a priority for the city council. And because of that, the council identified an ad hoc committee that was established to address several of these issues in the downtown. On July 5th, just a few meetings ago, council adopted the recommendations from this downtown ad hoc committee, which included a recommendation for development of a downtown parking management plan. So on May 16th, staff issued an RFP for development of a parking plan. We received five proposals and we selected ultimately W Trans based on their experience, understanding of the Gilroy downtown parking needs and the fact that they did really well in terms of an explanation of how they were going to put the plan together. The plan will address parking of the entire downtown area from 1st Street all the way down to 10th from Eagleberry to Railroad. The plan will determine and address parking needs of all the downtown users. So we're talking about the customers, we're talking about the employees, and also the residents that live downtown right now. The plan will develop strategic parking program that will provide clear parking rules and regulations that'll be easy to enforce. And it will provide for both short and long-term recommendations based on the downtown's projected growth from the general plan update that was recently approved. It will develop an enforcement program that will fund itself through the assessment of fines and will allow for implementation of an active, self-sustaining parking enforcement program. The plan will be generated also through extensive community outreach and engagement, which will include stakeholder interviews, community outreach, media that'll be prepared and distributed, community workshops, pop-up events, and an online community questionnaire that'll be done in both English and Spanish. Staff is recommending approval of a contract with a base bid amount of $273,000 with a 10% contingency for a total amount of $307,61. It's recommended that the funding for this project be from the general fund in the form of a loan against the future revenue generated by the park, downtown parking programs to be established within the, within the document. And to be set aside and accounted for in a new special revenue downtown parking management fund. Repayment will be refined and recommended when the program is formally established and will consider the annual revenues generated by that program. So what happens if we don't have a parking management program for our downtown? Well, parking will continue to be at the will of the downtown users. We'll not have an opportunity to develop a program that will address the needs of all downtown users, customers, workers, residents. Limited or no parking enforcement will continue as it is today. Use of the new parking lot, 7th and Eagleberry, will not be able to be strategically programmed. And parking conditions in the downtown will remain status quo. However, staff this evening is recommending the adoption of a resolution at city council, the City of Gilroy, amending the budget for the City of Gilroy fiscal year 2223 and appropriating funds expenditure amount, amendments, excuse me, from the general fund. Also award a contract to W Trans in the amount of $273,419 with a project contingency of $27,342 for a downtown parking management plan, project number 22 RFP PW477, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. That is the end of my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. All right, any questions of Gary? Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, thank you for, all of you for this report. And as you mentioned, sort of the last report was done in 2005, which is night and day to where compared, compared to where we're at now.
Been for several years.
Obviously, I mean, again, and when you look at all the new development and one thing that wasn't mentioned in there, but also very important to note is with the future development of the Sharps, how is that going to impact sort of parking as well? You know, and I'm glad that you mentioned, and yes, as the Chair of the Ad Hoc Committee, I'm glad that we unanimously voted in favor of this. So, but when you look at sort of the cost, I mean, obviously, that's, that's, that's an ongoing issue that some folks may have. And it's an important issue to discuss, but I like that the fact that it's really a loan. So and again, it's an investment in, in really in our downtown. And I see it as, yes, the cost, it's quite a bit, but we're going to get that money back eventually. And so I want to make sure that's clear. But, you know, and again, sort of in your guys' findings, as I mentioned, looking back at the 2005 plan compared to where we're at now, I mean, it's no other way to go but to get a new plan going because I worry that whatever was put in that plan in 2005, I didn't get a chance to look at it. And we're sort of our downtown and the city is going as a whole. I don't think it's going to be adequate enough. And one of, one of, people may say, well, don't we have city staff that can do this? I think it's more than just sort of drawing, you know, a square and putting parking lots. But I think we really need to get some experts in here and sort of help us sort of tackle this issue. Because again, I think if we don't do it right, and as you know, you know, we have one chance to make a good impression, especially for our residents. If we don't do it right, we're going to be having this discussion 20 years from now. So I think I share that because I want to make sure the council understands the importance of this. And I think they all do, obviously. But I think it's important for us to get a plan that's going to be effective moving forward. Thank you for your work. Thanks.
All right, Councilmember Rocco.
Yeah, well, we do pay for it. When the loan's paid back, we pay the loan off. So just to get that straight. But I, I, I can't vote for this in good conscience. Wasting $300,000 of the taxpayers' money on things we've done before and we did nothing about it. The last one I remember, we did an end-up thing and it was when Mayor Al was here. And they, their main thing that they advised was enforcement to free up parking spaces. Because there's people that park there for days. I was at the bank about a month ago and a guy had his car up on jack stands right next to Heritage Bank. And he had all the wheels off. And that's the kind of stuff that's going on. When, when we went through this before, we put all new signs downtown, we did restriping, signs to alert people where the parking lots were and everything. And we started enforcing it and until Gary Maroka left Gilroy and then it stopped. And when he was here and we were enforcing it, we had parking spaces because they were freed up. And I think that's what we need to do now. I think we need to work with our police department and do enforcement. If we have to hire somebody, let's hire somebody. But to just keep throwing more money down, down the disposal on this, is, I think, just, it's, it's not a good way for us to be spending the taxpayers' money. And $300,000 is a lot of money. And the whole scope of it from, all the way from Leavesley to 10th Street, you know, I, I could see if it was more scaled down to the core of the downtown where the parking problems are. But because we're not going to grow in these parking spaces. The only way to free them up is enforcement. So I would be for enforcing it, but I'm not for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks?
I have a lot of questions about this downtown parking management, management plan. I'm the Vice Chair of the Ad Hoc Committee for this project. And when it was mentioned, it was mentioned to us at 200,000 and I did question it then. So I, it was not a unanimous vote. Gary, how much of this could the city do? Because I do agree that we need a downtown parking management plan, but I feel like staff could do a lot of it. I mean, we have a finite amount of parking places that, that one of our employees could count and identify. I could see if we were building a structure, that would be a lot different. We would need an outside group to come and help us with this. But these parking, these parking places are what they are. And we have the new parking lot coming in. I don't get it, basically, because we could just, we could go ahead and assign or hire a person to go around and enforce the two-hour parking, or maybe you want to go to three-hour parking. I don't know. But I just feel this could be done in-house because 300,000 is a lot of money. Even if we get reimbursed, we're still out the original 300,000. Could staff do it?
Yeah, let Jimmy answer.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. This project, I do not believe is within the capabilities of staff for several reasons. One, we, we have a, this is a complex issue that involves parking for residential areas, especially when new projects or housing projects are built downtown. They're not required to provide their own parking. We have businesses and we also want to utilize parking spaces and parking areas for other activities. The only way to manage that is to develop some type of overall strategic plan on how our parking spots are utilized. And so I believe this is a very, I believe, I understand the cost issues, but I also believe this is a very complex, complex problem to solve. And then looking at other cities like Los Gatos and Campbell, their parking programs are extremely complicated and are very much electronic and utilize technology to make adjustments to when charges are made and such. We are starting from ground zero. We have not enforced really actively in well over a decade. So sure, staff could take a certain parking lot and identify some signs and put on it. But we have no really system in place for enforcement. And I also do believe that many of our ordinances or municipal code sections are outdated. For example, our overnight parking ordinance is requiring updated and it wouldn't be, this would not be the kind of project I would, I would want staff to utilize as we're not the experts and the complexity involved.
Okay, Councilmember Arminder.
Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Gary. As the third member of the ad hoc committee, I, without a title, I would say that I appreciate staff. I appreciate this effort. I think it's a worthwhile investment. It's much more complex than counting parking spaces, right? Or, or just enforcement, just hiring a, you know, a parking meter maid or whatever they're called these days. But we have a lot of underutilized space, space that could be designed better, right? And I think, like I said, I think it's worthwhile. I think it's an investment and we have to keep investing in our downtown. That's the main complaint and main concern that folks talk to us about all the time is our downtown, how it looks, where to park. You know, there's a number of issues. And so I think it merits, merits this type of money, especially if it's, if it's money that we're going to be refunded or, you know, we're essentially going to pay ourselves back. Thank you.
All right. Wait, Councilmember Marks, you already, you already went. So Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, I believe this is a, thank you, Gary, and thank you, Jimmy, for that. This is a highly technical component and, and it's going to take an outside agency like W Trans to be able to guide us through it. And, and it is going to be highly technical and, and, you know, for, for them to come up with variable parking rates and congestion management, I mean, it's just, it's a big, heavy lift. I believe that, that there are good successes out there. W Trans has worked on them before. And, you know, if we're going to be driving people through tourism and like the Sharps, like Councilmember Tovar said, and, and just so many other things, we need a way to keep, to keep parking spaces, car, parking spaces open. But don't forget too, like many of us, if we want that luxury of that front row spot, we're probably going to pay for it. If I'm, if I'm, you know, up in Truckee and I want to park right in front of the restaurant, well, I'm going to pay for it every hour. And that's fine. And that, that fee goes right back into the program. You know, where, you know, we take the loan out of general fund and then that's what's going to pay it back. So I'm all for this. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember LaRoma Yose?
Yeah, this, this reminds me a little bit of the conversation we actually just had where it's a quality of life issue. You know, it's just one of these things too. It's, you, you hear about parking downtown all the time and just the condition of downtown. And as we're getting new restaurants, new venues, you've got to have places that are available to people to be able to get down there and park your car. And for me, I think that the funding mechanism is fine. I like the fact that we have a system in place that will pay. is fine. I, I like the fact that we have a system in place that will pay, basically, the program will pay for itself over time. For me, though, really, it's, it's all about the enforcement. I mean, that's, everything hinges on that, similar to our last discussion. Everything hinges on the enforcement. We saw what happened when we don't enforce. People figure it out very quickly. And so whatever commitment we make to this program, we have to back that up with an equal commitment to enforce it. So, just my only caveat there, but I, I think it's very much needed.
Thank you. Okay, so my comment, and then before we'll go to public, public comment. Um, I don't, I don't understand why it is Leesley to 10th. That, that is going to be my, my first thing. It seems like, do you want to answer that, Gary? Or is there a specific reason?
Yes, I'm sorry. There, there's some confusion in the presentation. The limits are from first to 10th.
First to 10th.
First to 10th, along the Monterey Quarter.
Okay. Okay. And then it's, um, I'm wondering what's different? What do we have that's different for this study, other than the 7th and Eagleberry parking lot, that we haven't had up until now?
So, in the past, we've just had parking utilization surveys. How many cars are parked, what the percentage of utilization was, and that's really been it. This will do that, both in pu- uh, public lots and the private lots, look for, uh, potential shared opportunities between public and private. It'll come up with a plan, it'll come up with a program, like Councilmember Hilton said, for variable payments potentially. Uh, it'll, it'll just really structure and identify how we manage the parking in the downtown. We haven't done that before. We've had these parking plans that have counted, but we haven't had a plan that's looked at developing a program to look at the parking needs of the future.
So we haven't spent this kind of money before?
We, I don't know how much the previous ones have cost, so I can't speak to that. I don't think we have. However, we have never done a program like this.
And yet, none of this money includes an enforcement officer, right?
What this will develop is a plan that will identify how we move forward to fund those enforcement, whether it's an officer, or through contract, or however we decide to do enforcement. It will come up with a recommendation on how we move that forward and how we adopt that as a city.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, public comment. Is anybody out there wishing to speak?
I believe I have one speaker card for him.
Oh, person wants to speak right now?
Yes, and that's Scott Solmanson.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you have, yeah, the clock is going.
Right. I, um, I just wanted to say, it seems to me there, there's some amount of hand waving around the actual cost of this program. Um, this cost is just to get the plan for the, the plan for that. Yeah, in, in your experience, is the plan typically to implement if we're talking about technologies, um, enforcement actions, officers, whatever it might be, is the actual implementation costs of a plan like this, given the size of the parking area, parking spots that you've got?
Okay, sir, can you face the microphone and speak?
Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, because we can't hear you, and it's not interactive anyway, so, and plus, there are the members of the public who can't, it's being recorded, and you have to bring the microphone.
I'm just wondering what type of a, how much of a multiple of this, the, the plan costs $300,000 to develop. The implementation of the plan, given the known size of the parking spots in question, the known area in question, typically is an implementation plan of what might be being looked at. What's the multiple of the cost of this, is what I would be wondering. Because it looks easy to, at this, to say, well, through fees and such, we'll be paid back the $300,000. But if the implementation of the plan that's delivered is a million five, that changes the,
Yeah.
the picture. That's all.
Yep, thank you. All right, no other public speakers?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Tovar, do you want to make another comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, I want to make a motion that's-
Oh, okay. I have one more question, but if you want to make your motion and get a second, then I can still ask a question.
I make the motion that we award the contract to W Trans for the downtown parking management plan.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have motion and a second on, on the table. Um, do we know what the cost of implement, do we have some idea of that? Because I, as far as I, in my head, it's just the cost of the enforcement officer. But-
It's, it depends. And that's what the program is going to identify. Uh, the speaker was actually correct. This is a program. This is a plan that will say, this is what we need to implement. Uh, what the program will also do is look at funding, not only for enforcement, for any other recommendation that's provided through, uh, grant opportunities or other funding, funding opportunities.
May I make a suggestion that the, I, I believe Councilmember Tovar, uh, moved item B. I think we should do item A first, because B follows A logically here. So, A would be to adopt a resolution amending the budget.
Okay. Okay, so we'll do A first, but, um, uh, Councilmember Armandares, are you okay seconding that? Okay. And Jimmy, do you want to go ahead and make the comment you were going to make anyway?
I would, I would, uh, remind council that a program like this is very similar to the water and wastewater funds that are enterprise funds. And so, it is responsible for generating the amount of revenue required to pay for the infrastructure, the equipment, the enforcement officer, all those things. So that's one thing we will have this study look at, is the actual enterprise fund. So that way, the general fund is not on the hook for any, any costs associated with it. The implementation cost will, will be a number, and that will be included in, uh, you know, how we finance it, whether that's through a lease or some kind of, uh, purchase or whatever. We just don't know what's all out there. So, uh, think of it as a, like a, our water fund and wastewater fund.
Got it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city going amending the budget for fiscal year 2223 and appropriating the proposed expenditure amendments from the general fund. And that can be done, that has to be roll call?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocco?
No.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lito Muñoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
No.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Five to two, I think.
Okay, Mayor, with that being said, now, again, I make the motion to award the contract to W Trans for the downtown parking management plan. Thank you, Andy.
I'll second that. Okay, motion made by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Armandares, and also roll call vote.
This can actually be a digital vote here, Madam Mayor?
Oh, this will be digital. Okay.
Just give me one second here.
Sure. It's not giving me the option.
Then I'll do the roll call vote here.
Okay.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocco?
No.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lito Muñoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
No.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, again, five to two. Okay, um, I'd like to ask you guys, let's just do a, a less than five-minute break, three-minute break, if you don't mind.
Five, five, five.
So let's, let's come back at 8:20. It's 8:17. All right? Thank you. Okay, we're starting up with item 12.1. Excuse me, 11.3.
Can we just skip to top?
Okay, 11.3 memorandum of understanding with the county of Santa Clara to utilize affordable housing bonds, 2016 measure A, for the development of affordable housing at 8th and Alexander. Okay, Jimmy's going to give us this report.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. The item before you is a proposed agreement, uh, memorandum of understanding between the Santa Clara County Office of Support of Housing and the city of Gilroy for a, an affordable housing project at the county-owned lands of 8th and Alexander. Uh, if you recall, uh, not more than, not, uh, less than a month ago, the Office of Supporting Housing Director Consuela Hernandez, uh, presented to council and discussed, uh, measure A housing bonds that, uh, the city is, should be competing for. And, uh, so this is where we, we are showing our competition. The measure A housing bond is $950 million, approved in 2016 by the voters of Santa Clara County. And those funds are almost, uh, been used, uh, almost entirely been used up. So we are running out of time in order to make sure that, uh, Gilroy gets another housing project. If you do recall, the city already has one affordable, uh, project on Monterey, the Monterey Gateway Senior Apartments. Uh, and so, uh, this is an opportunity for us to increase affordable housing and prevent and reduce homelessness. So, uh, many of the topics we have been discussing this evening are intertwined. And, uh, one of the ways to present, prevent people from being unhoused is to provide them affordable housing options. And so, the project on 8th and Alexander, uh, would be a city-county partnership, but it does need a memorandum of understanding to just begin and to, uh, basically get our name in the queue to apply for these funds. Uh, you're not approving a project right now. You're essentially almost like the ENA. You're, you're saying you support affordable housing in that area, and you support that staff works with the county. Uh, but at the end, uh, there'll be future meetings with, uh, Gilroy Council and the county board of supervisors, uh, to get their project approved. And we'll also be having community meetings to get community input about that particular, their, that project. Uh, the site that 8th and Alexander is 1.3 acres, and it would require rezoning and general plan amendment to allow housing. And it could be rental, uh, supportive housing, or ownership. Uh, it could be agricultural housing, uh, for unhoused farm workers, seniors. So there's no true, uh, decision yet about who or what kind of housing, uh, uh, would be available. Uh, at this time, the county has identified that most likely it would be a minimum of 57 units. Uh, that number's not set in stone. It could change, go up, uh, but just for reference sake, and just for, uh, give you an example of what a project could be, uh, you know, kind of the back of the envelope thought is at, at least 57 units. Uh, and they would be, uh, deed restricted. Uh, the county proposes that a minimum of 14 units are for 30% or less of the area me- medium income, and, uh, 14 units for 50% or less, uh, AMI, and then the rate remaining 80% under, uh, AMI. And as you can, uh, see here in this location, uh, it's real close to transit. Uh, it's not too, it's very close to downtown, not too far from City Hall. And, and so is in a good location, uh, for access to services and, um, things that the community needs in order to support their housing in that area. Uh, very, very complicated, uh, table, and we've talked about this, about Santa Clara County area median income at being 168,000 for a family of four. Uh, this is a, an outrageous number, because the word affordable is relative. And, uh, in Santa Clara County, uh, this number is, is most likely not really affordable for a lot of individuals. So, uh, approval of this MOU and entering into this agreement with the county to develop at least 57 units of housing that is below the $168,000, uh, income level would certainly, um, be a good start. Uh, one area that the county is looking for support from the city is impact fees. And in any development project, typically the city, uh, accumulates fees for the impact it has to the sewers, the water system, uh, traffic, street trees, uh, and public facilities. So, uh, I like to characterize this as the city's contribution, but it's not revenues that we, um, would be giving back. It's just revenues we wouldn't be collecting in the impact funds. And so it's about $2.5 million. Uh, and again, these are kind of back-of-the-envelope numbers, because we don't know the exact number of units. Uh, but you're, uh, you know, you're looking at 2.2 to 2.5 million dollar in impact fees that the city would not collect. This is a request from the county. Uh, I, and it is one that we, as staff, are recommending, recommending, because not only are we, um, policy-wise supporting housing in a location, the city's actually financially supporting housing in the location by, uh, waiving, uh, impact fees in order to get more housing there, get more units, and to get a better product. So, uh, this is not money that's lost to the general fund. It just would not be collected by these impact fee, um, areas. And so, that would in essence be the city's contribution. Um, the recommendation this evening is to approve the MOU with the county of Santa Clara to utilize affordable housing bonds, measure A, for the development of affordable housing at 8th and Alexander, to authorize the city administrator to waive development impact fees and to execute the memorandum of understanding and any related documents. Uh, I'm tech, not technically waiving the fees tonight, but to, does a policy, uh, from council that when we get into actual negotiations with the project, and they're trying to pin out the numbers, uh, I, as the city minister, can say, I have direction from the council that we will not charge you, uh, impact fees. And then authorize the city administrator to make minor modifications to the MOU at the, at the, uh, advice and counsel of our city attorney. The MOU is not 100% completed. We're very, very close, and we feel any changes would be, um, mostly, uh, commas, periods, hyphens, things like that. So, uh, you know, we're asking for the authorization from myself with review from Andy to, uh, to enter into that MOU. So, I would be happy to answer any questions that we have. Um, Cindy McCormick, uh, in our planning department, and also Crystal Zamora, uh, in my office, too, have been working on this project and answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to first comment that, uh, we, it's been almost a year that we have been trying to get a me- measure A funded, uh, project in Gilroy. And Jimmy, direct, working directly with, uh, the Office of Support of Housing, and then me with Mike Wasserman's office, with the elected, just to get to where we are today, just like we've been waiting a long time for that ENA was selected. It feels the same here, because it's been since last October, which is when Gilroy was last offered a measure A funded housing project, but it was through VTA and on the transit center, a transit center that then we wouldn't have had half of until high-speed rail came. So, I just want to reiterate that this has been a long time coming. It's been a absolute joint effort. And I want to give credit where credit is due to a lot of work of staff that we directed them since, since the VTA project, still wanting housing there, and point out that this is giving units to Gilroy that are in the extremely low and very low income category. So, that's, I just want to preface it so that everybody understands what, what this is, even though it's going to take a while to come to fruition. Okay, Councilmember Rocco.
Jimmy, is the county giving the land, or are they going to pay themselves for it?
I don't think they pay themselves for it. I think they just utilize it. So, no.
Okay. And also, i- is there a way that when you, you guys are talking to them, you can, um, advocate for more units on the low end of the scale?
Well, we, we have here what the county proposes, and, uh, 30% or less of the AMI would be 14 units, 1,450, and, uh, the remaining under 80%. If the council wishes us to include more of those units, I would say we could take that back to them, but I would ask that we not make that a strict restriction. The, the, the problem that you could run into is that developers are going to make their money on the 80% and less. And if you start taking that number away, you will de-incentivize. So I, I, I ask us to strike a balance here for very low, but also remembering that, uh, developers are, are trying to make a profit, too.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'd like to point out, too, uh, Councilmember Rocco, on that exact subject, that when VTA was proposing to use measure A money, an awful lot of the development they were proposing was market-rate housing in order to subsidize the below rate. So, for the county to be suggesting this as something they can do, I think certainly hits a lot of what we would hope to achieve. And if they could do better, great, but, um, I, I think this is an excellent start. Councilmember Armandares?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Jimmy and your team, for, um, wrestling with the county to get this. I think, um, our part of the community needed, uh, further investment from the county with those measure A funds, given the amount of unhoused, low-income, you know, and working poor residents that we have. And so I appreciate their, um, this work. Um, and I think that measure A, um, the way it was written, too, also restricts what percentage of the funding will go to, uh, what AMI, or what level of, um, of finances, right, um, and, and housing they can build. Um, I think, um, our waiving of the, uh, of the fees is a, is a great, uh, way for us to stand behind what we've been saying for, for some time now, and, and how we are committed to, um, housing and providing housing to our, um, to our low-income residents. And so I, I definitely support that, and I appreciate your work on this.
Okay, if there are no other questions from council, I'm going to go to the public hearing. Uh, not public hearing, public comment.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one public comment from Valentino Ranelles.
Okay.
Hello again. Um, my, my question kind of got addressed, because, um, when I say affordable, I cringe, because affordable, the, we know local median is not affordable. My other question to that was, I'm not quite understanding waiving the development impact fees. When it says to waive development impact fees, are we talking about, um, the, the development's impact? Because when I read that, I was thinking like, that specific development, the impact on the community, and what brought my, like, that might, was parking. Like, we already have parking issues, I heard, and I don't know if this to be true, that the First Street, um, complex, that parking, like, each development that's coming, they're trying to eliminate parking. And so, on one hand, we're trying to address the parking in downtown, but on the other hand, we're, uh, approving developments to come into Gilroy and not have parking, which is going to, like, roll over back into this basket. And so I was just curious with this specific development, is the parking, has that been addressed? Are they including parking for families? And, um, is waiving the development impact fees- And is waiving the development impact fees waiving that further in-depth of, like, the parking issue with that? Thank you.
Thank you. We can answer that.
Thank you for that question. When we talk about development impact fees, if you, if you think about a resident that is brand-new, they have to basically buy into the sewer system. And so they pay several thousands of dollars to connect to the sewer system. So that's considered the development impact. So those fees would be waived in order to produce more units of higher quality. And thus, that would be money that the city would collect. So wastewater, water, traffic impact. So it could have some impacts on parking, but that would be something we would work out with the county during the process of the project, identifying what they, where they expect these residents to park. So I couldn't specifically answer that question. But in general, every new housing unit pays impact fees for connecting to city services.
Yeah, and the point in our council packet is letting us know that for something of this size, those impact fees are anywhere from $2 to $3 million. And so that's what the city is basically investing in this by not charging what we would normally charge so that the development can proceed without paying those fees. Okay, so this is an item where we need, what do we need?
I'm going to suggest that one motion could really approve all three. They're really all varieties of the same. And I want to also make a statement for the record, which is that the MOU does not obligate the city to approve the project. We are indicating our support for it, and that, that helps with the granting and the financing of these affordable projects, which are always very difficult. But we are not, we still have planning authority over it. We still have to go through the sequel process. And that will come back to the city council or to the city, city, planning processes at some point.
I'd like to motion that, Mayor.
Okay.
Second?
Item 11.3, items 3A, B, and C that we approved.
Okay, and that's all seconded by Councilmember Tobar? And this is a digital vote for all three? That's all right?
Yes, it would be.
All right, and that passed unanimously. Thank you all. Okay, city administrators' reports. It's got a lot. Here we go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council. I have several reports, but some of them are quite short. First, we'll start with the California Office of Emergency Services grant. The city was awarded nearly $1 million from the governor's Office of Emergency Services to, goes towards the city's planning efforts in building a more resilient community during times of emergencies. This is an unusual grant that it pays for staffing and enables us to have $1 million, and the entire state was only given 15. So we got 1 million of the 15 that was granted and very complimentary of our emergency services and volunteer coordinator, Andrew Young, who applied once and got rejected and came back again and was successful. So this, I'm going to give you a little example here. It will allow us to hire a full-time community resilience coordinator that focuses on capacity building and local initiatives, including but not limited to education and outreach, mitigation planning and implementation, recovery planning, and future project scoping that will directly benefit our most socially vulnerable and high-hazard-risk communities. Over time, it is hoped that this investment will meaningfully impact those who have disproportionately affected by disasters and support overall resilience within our community. You know, at times, we tell people that we're not an island down here, but in certain ways, we are. We are surrounded by wildland. And so natural disasters are something we're always, you know, working on. And having this money that the state gave us is going to go a long ways to getting us better prepared. So congratulations to Andrew for his working. Congratulations to Gilroy for getting another grant.
Yeah, okay, can I, before you go to the next one, are there any questions? I'm going to ask that between each one. Okay, 12.2?
12.2 is just a very short report slash comment on car shows and their impact in the city. Earlier today, we had a resident who, you know, talked about these events and such. And we get it from both sides. We have those who believe that there isn't much impact, and we have those that believe there are a great impact. And I do remind people when I get emails and such that there is nothing illegal with having a really nice car and driving it slow around town. We will focus, as we do on many issues, with the illegal activities. And we are very proud of our police department that responds to on summer nights 170 to 200 calls on a Saturday night. And those aren't always the numbers just for car shows. We have those type of activities for non-car show events. So I certainly understand frustration that comes about. Nobody likes seeing public intoxication or fights or things like that. But they are not just associated with the car shows. And so we look at these events like we do any other. We are currently evaluating our ability to cite the organizer of this event for lack of a special event permit. And so those are our best remedies, and that and just regular law enforcement. But a lot of the calls we get are very minor, and some are very major. So I do understand some frustration that the police may be not able to respond as quick as they can, but they prioritize the calls. And some of the calls that we do get are quite serious. So there's very little we can do. As was mentioned, no cruising ordinances and such. And so those are very difficult to enforce equitably. And, and again, those are usually fines or misdemeanors and such. So it takes a lot of police time to monitor which car was, you know, it's not impossible, but we don't, and our priority list, it is not the highest on some of those nights. So we will continue to try to do everything we can to mitigate some of the items. And we will also try to make sure, we will make sure that those who put these events on organize them, especially at a central location, know their obligations in doing so. And so I can answer any questions. And also, Police Chief Espinosa is here as well.
Okay, are there any questions on 12.2?
I do.
Okay.
Jimmy, thank you for that information. And also, thank you for mentioning the difficulty it would have, it would require to equitably cite folks for cruising, right? But my question is, have you ever received a request for such a report, the impact on city services regarding any of our other downtown activities? The beer crawl or any of the wine stroll, any of the alcohol-related activities? Has any council member ever requested that we get a report back from police on drunk driving or drunk, drunk in public incidents?
I would, I would say there are some events. Items like the, you know, the wine stroll or whatever tend to not elevate or tend to have a high number of police calls. But there are other events that we could ask about public intoxication or DUI checkpoints.
We have the data on those things. That, that data's been requested before? Or is that?
I can, I'm good, I can't be specific about when, but I could assume that at some point in time, somebody has requested data on an event that maybe had an incident or had a lot of police calls. But specifically, I can't aim one.
Okay, thank you.
Are we, I'm sorry, she's mentioned the word cruising. Are we talking, we're not talking about cruising, right? We're talking about cart, these shows, the, the number of car, like.
The request was made about the Garlic City Cruise Night. That was what I saw on the agenda originally.
Okay.
Am I wrong, Jimmy?
Okay, we're not, we're not, yeah, sorry. I would, I.
We're talking about the event on August 27th that was a advertised event that did not have a special event permit.
Exactly.
That's the event.
It was on First Street. Yeah, that one. And it wasn't a cruising, it was car, I mean, I was there. It was not.
I was there, too. But cruising, but.
Oh, I wasn't cruising. I was at Relish and came out, and it was all there.
No, but it was advertised as a cruise night.
Okay, but that's not what it was, and it didn't have a permit. That was the issue. Right, so the city is unaware and can't be prepared and.
But the request was made of Jimmy to report back on what city services were, what the impact was on city services and including, like, police response and, and police services.
Well, I wouldn't say I was requested by council. I got questions from both sides, and I felt it was important to discuss what we do and our feelings about that. And so on any event where I get lots of public comment or council comment, I would agendize, you know, an update on that to give them information.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Madam Mayor, I do have a speaker card for this item.
A speaker card for 12.2?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
And it's Ali Armandares.
Okay.
Again, my name is Ali Armandares. And right now that I heard this little dialogue between you, it looks like Jimmy said one of the city council persons perhaps asked you for this report. And if so, do we have a name for that person?
I was not requested to provide a report by a city council member.
All right, thank you. Well, I'm here because the, all of a sudden, you know, because of this, I guess, this car show that just happened, and then we have this on the agenda where we want to hear about the impact on city services. We've been having car shows now since I can remember. And, you know, and I'm 80 years old, so I can remember quite a bit, you know. And the, it makes me feel, and it makes a lot of people in this community feel that this is an attack on our culture because most of the car shows are put on by, you know, Chicanos, Mexicanos, Mexican-American, whatever name people want to call us, you know. And I want to ask each and every one of you, how many of you know how many car clubs there is in Gilroy and how many club members there is in Gilroy? You know, how many of you have talked to the club members and say, what does your club do? What does it do for the community? I know for a fact that the, that Los Padrinos, there's three or four fundraisers every year to send, to send that money to St. Jude. You know, they also do toy drives, and they go out and they give these gifts to the community. They also do food drive, they do clothing. They do a lot for the Gilroy community. You don't know because I don't think, or maybe you do know. That's why I said, how many of you even know club members? And how many car clubs there is in Gilroy? Good, thank you, you know. And, you know, we should be proud that we have these car clubs. We should be proud that they come to Gilroy and that they, they invite other members of the community because all they bring is unity, unity among people. Maybe some of you think they're gang members, but I can guarantee you that most of them are not. You know, they spend their time, their money in beautifying these, these cars, you know. And they come here with pride. They have great pride on what they've accomplished and what they bring to our town. When they come here and have their car shows or cruise nights, whatever you want to call it, they spend money, just like people that come to the, to your beer crawl or your rodeo or any other festivity that Gilroy has. The same as on January 1st, when the motorcyclists come, you know, for Menudo or whatever at Cielito Lino. And this has been going on for years and years. And some of you that are from Gilroy know that I'm saying this, you know. So why, all of a sudden, is there an impact on the city services? It's the same. Nothing has changed. You know, we're good people. You know, I have a 57 sugar, and I'm very proud of it.
It's been time.
You're not a bunch of gang members, even though you may think so.
Thank you. Okay.
I just received three speaker cards. The first, next one is Valentina Ranelles, followed by Ron Kirkish, followed by Scott Solmanson.
Okay.
I apologize, I didn't see that this, this section had public comment, otherwise.
It doesn't normally, but here we go.
I would implore you guys to really look around, again, surrounding cities. I feel like we're going backwards. San Jose just removed their 50-year ban on cruising. I think this is a great opportunity to really embrace our community in Gilroy and find, like, not talking about getting an ordinance ban on these type of things. Sorry? Oh, no, but it was brought up to have an ordinance for cruising.
No, no, it's special event permit. To have permits, like all the other car shows that we have in town, too. When the Chamber of Commerce has their car. It's not supposed to be interactive, but I just want to clarify for people that this is, what we're talking about is how to have the same rules that apply to everybody who does car shows. That's all, not to ban car shows at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes.
As I will say, is like, I, like, San Jose just removed their ban on cruising, and other cities embrace the community. And again, like, when you do have city council members who say they are drug addicts and gang bangers, it is going to cause a discourse in the community. You can shake your head, it was said, I sat in the meeting. It is going to cause discourse in the community to pick up the phone, to call and make a complaint when there's lowriders in a parking lot because this is what they were told to somebody who is an elected official, saying these things. So if, as an elected official, you're telling your constituents that they're gang bangers and drug addicts, those calls are going to be increased. And the comment of, like, we don't get those calls on the wine walks, well, yeah, the people who are calling are the ones on the wine walks. It's, it's a different population. And I think there's a bigger issue of, like, being responsible for what we say as elected members and being responsible what you put to your constituents because it's causing a divide. And you have a group of people who hear this, who see these people in the community, and they're going to call the cops because they were told they're gang bangers and drug addicts and thinking that they're doing their part in protecting the community, they're going to call and report it, as is their right. But I think that this is a good area to highlight what we say and accept the responsibility of when we put these words to our constituents. Don't put it out on ignorance, but actually inform yourself and know what you're saying so that your constituents know who their community is and you're not getting an abundance of calls to the police department when these type of events are taking place in the community. I look forward to having, like, if, you know, proper procedures are followed, but allowing my children to be able to be part of this community and be part of the lowrider community and embracing it and not having to go to San Jose with everything else that we unfortunately have to go to San Jose for, not having to go to other communities, but feeling comfortable within where we live and knowing that there isn't a stigma against us, against our family members, and that we are accepted here with the grace that every other community is accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Ron Kirkish.
I'm sorry about the letter that I wrote. It was out of frustration, out of what other people had discussed to me and the appearance of a lack of caring or desire to listen. However, the fact remains, at the last rally or car show, damage was done to government property. The ballards, there was four ballards that were destroyed. Why? Why did they have to do that? Why didn't the organizers tell their people, "Don't do destructive stuff. Don't urinate on people's property, on their doors, on their windows. Don't urinate on people's property, on their doors, on their windows? Don't trash downtown? Don't fight? Somebody thought they heard a gunshot? So I understand that there's a certain amount of pride that people have on their cars and bikes, and they are beautiful. But if they don't do it responsibly, then something needs to be done. And I do think you're right, you're going on the right track, that you're looking for these organizers. I understand it could be, rumor is, is that one of our police officers talked to the organizer, and the organizer was very rude and told him to go someplace. And that's not right either. So if that's the kind of people we're dealing with, with these, then we don't want them here. We want to have a peaceful and a respectful event, not a bunch of people destroying stuff, throwing their trash all over the place, urinating anywhere they want to, drinking outside, which is against the law. So let's be responsible.
All right, thank you. Do we still have one more?
Scott Solmanson.
Thank you again, council, late night tonight. The, I just wanted, maybe I didn't hear what the actual report was. I was also curious about what had happened down there. I just live right downtown. I love going down there for all of the events. The bikers are coming through, the tamale thing. We're down there for the cars or whatever. It did seem like this time there was a lot more people just kind of standing around, maybe just a volume of people. And people had set up barbecues and stuff, which I didn't quite remember from previous Saturday nights. And I saw the broken, I don't know what to call them, the ballards, yeah. And I assumed that just something had happened. So I was just curious if something was happening that I wasn't aware of, something bigger. But I wanted to make sure that I heard what your report was, was that the, like, police impact was just kind of like any other Saturday night or event that was kind of seen? And there was nothing related to the report, was my understanding. So maybe if you wanted to restate that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other speaker comments, Madam Mayor.
Do you want to move on, or do you want to say anything else? Okay. Okay, 12.3 is Uvis Creek Cleanup Event.
Just wanted to let council know that on September 17th, this Saturday from 9:00 AM to noon, the Recreation Department is sponsoring the Coastal, California Coastal Cleanup Day at Uvis Creek on the Christmas Hill Park ramp site. Parking and registration is just right by the Red Miller Barn, the Miller Red Barn, excuse me. And there'll be bins for garbage collection and voluntarily walk in the creek, picking up discarded items and celebrating the Clean Creek Day. So that occurs this Saturday.
Okay.
9 to 12.
Okay, 12.4.
This is a report back on the abatement of the site that has been discussed earlier tonight. I'm here more to talk about the, what was discovered and what is being remedied. The site at IOOF had numerous encampments that were beginning to remove rocks and sediment around the footings of the bridge. And that required an inspection from our Public Works Department and was deemed that the damage needed to be taken care of. And so the individuals who were residing at that area were given a seven-day notice to vacate the property. The city did contact our partners in various nonprofits and also with the county office to support, or I'm sorry, yes, the county as well to try to find services and locations for these folks to relocate. There were over 15 yards of debris removed and numerous rocks, very large boulders that go underneath the footings as well. Daryl, our Public Works Director, could probably give you a better explanation. But the work is still not completed as the equipment that we have is not small enough to get under the bridge to replace the removed items. And so the other question that we get is that, what are we doing to ensure that, you know, those encampments do not return? We are looking at our options as to provide fencing or some kind of blockage in the area to make sure we don't have this occur again. And I am aware that we have had quality-of-life officers revisit the location since that time to ensure that nobody is relocating. So again, this is just an update on what occurred at that site and what we're doing going forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, you said there's somebody, we have a comment on this.
Yes, Scott Solmanson.
Thank you again, this is why I came here tonight. I had a very specific question around that. Thank you for cleaning that area up. My kids try to walk past that place every day as well. My question was around what the site cleanup actually was going to be entailing. You said it's not done. There's a derelict building there that appears to be city property associated with a well. It's got broken windows and boarded up things and a very old map and a derelict flagpole. And it looks like that, and the landscaping is just not very maintained in terms of a broken windows sort of policy to make this place look a little better and not encourage people to come back to it. I would just wanted to know if that was part of the cleanup effort that was going to be being performed there? That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 12.5.
And the last item I have to announce to you is that the city of Gilroy and the city of Morgan Hill will be sponsoring an accessory dwelling unit grant program webinar. This is presented by CalHFA, which is the California Housing Financing Agency. And a grant of up to $40,000 is available for California homeowners to fund construction of an ADU on their property. And this particular information session is on September 29th from 6 o'clock to 7 PM. And you can find out information on how to get some funding for an ADU on your property. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. That concludes my report, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for, anybody who has questions, please email your questions directly because this is, it's not a Q and A here when you have comments. So you need to email specifically if you have a question. All right, city attorneys' reports?
Okay, I have no report, but I can announce the closed session if it is your desire.
Well, go right ahead.
Okay, we have two closed sessions. The first is Conference of Legal Counsel, Pending Litigation, that means existing litigation. Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Gilroy City Code 17A113B, Jesse R. Sanchez, Myrna Leonides Sanchez, and the estate of Jesse Sanchez Jr. versus the city of Gilroy, County of Santa Clara, Rebecca Armendariz, Sally Armendariz, Domingo Armendariz, filed August 22nd, 2022. That's the first closed session. The second one is Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 and Gilroy City Code Section 17A112. Two, employee name, Andy Faber, City Attorney. So the process now is, I will advise you on the first one, the litigation matter. And I am hereby advising you that, in my opinion, it would be, it is advisable to assert the attorney-client privilege to go into closed session because discussion in open session would likely and unavoidably prejudice the position of the city. The next item would be to take public comment on either closed-session item, if there is any.
Okay, so I'll first ask for. Should I, I'm sorry, Mayor, should I recuse myself before public comment, Andy?
No, you can wait, you can wait.
Do we have any public comment?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment.
In that case, the next item is to move to go into closed session on the litigation item. You do not have to move to go into closed session on the employee evaluation, but once you get into closed session, you have to take a vote to stay in the closed session for the second item. Thanks to the OGO, the way this works.
Okay, so we are going to.
So we need a vote to go into closed session at this point for the litigation.
Okay, everybody voting to go into closed session? I see it, okay. And the time is 9 o'clock.
Okay, and I believe Councilmember Armendariz indicated she is accusing herself on the first closed session.
That is true.
Okay, so I need to just wait for a CMAP and everything to be turned off. So let's just take a 5, 9:05, okay?